Again, as I mentioned, my name is Dave Davis. I've been back in this area since 2014. And since that point in time, I've been a resident of Beach Mountain Lakes, which is in in Drums, part of Butler Township. And I'm here to just go on the record that I support the ordinance that you have in front of you, particularly as it relates to Honey Hole Road. In the package that was listed on the website is a letter from the Butler Township Supervisors from October 19th. And and they also submitted an engineering study prepared by Barry Isett and associates that addressed the vehicular weight restriction study that they had done, particularly as it relates to Honey Hole Road. The six-ton limit, I thought, was good. I like the fact that the ordinance also allowed permits, variance permits to be submitted in the case of those individuals who might be impacted in the negative sense to this to this ordinance. Of specific concern, again, I've been back in in the area since 2014. And over the last four years, I've been very active in the Beach Mountain Lake Association. First two years, I was on the Treasurers Committee. And last two years, I was on the board. Last year, I was president of the board. So I am speaking, I believe, for Beach Mountain Lake Association. We have a 160-acre lake. We have 1,000 homes. And but the north part of the lake, the north side of the lake is owned by Blooming Springs. There are approximately 1,200 acres involved in that. And they've already applied to Butler Township for a variance to to put a warehouse operation in there. They also have a water extraction facility, taking water from the aquifer there. That's already received tentative approval from Dennis and Township and the Susquehanna River Basin Commission. And of course, that would add transportation to it. That's not in operation yet. But the approvals are certainly appear to be moving along. So again, that's that's my concern is the development of the 1,200 acres north of the lake and the impact they would have on a Honey Hole Road without weight restriction. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Mr. Griffith?
Good evening. Now, I'm sure before I get started, I just want to congratulate you on your recent wedding. Congratulations. On the topic of the Honey Hole Road issue, I am not adverse to a weight limit on that road. I'm kind of adverse to the way the ordinance is drafted. And it's not inclusive enough to really make the ordinance effective for the county on the county side. I think a weight restriction is probably a good thing to protect our roads from destruction from heavy trucks and traffic of that nature. But the ordinance isn't inclusive enough to say who's going to collect fines and who's going to enforce it. I know that Title 75 of the state, Pennsylvania State Vehicle Code, says that there's a weight limit if you put a weight limit on it over a certain amount of tonnage is a certain amount of fine. But it doesn't say who's going to collect the fine in our ordinance. It doesn't. The other concern that I have is Butler Township never passed a resolution originally to even ask the county to take that road over. That was done by a letter to council. The letter that was in the packet was a letter to council asking the county council to consider it. I think the municipality has an obligation to have a public meeting on that and a public vote by the supervisors to say they are requesting the county to take over, putting a weight restriction on that road prior to all voting on that. So I think there's some flaws in the ordinance that needs to be addressed before the council votes on it. Again, I'm not adverse to the weight limit at all. I just think that the ordinance needs to be more conclusive to make sure who's going to collect the fines, who's going to enforce the ordinance. Is Butler Township going to do it? Is the state police going to do it? And if they do do, if they do in fact enforce it, where does the fine money, the revenue go? Does it go to Butler Township even though they don't own the road? And then we have to chase Butler Township for the money to fix the road because now it's damaged. That's not spelled out in the ordinance. So I think we need to do a better job on the ordinance to make it more inclusive so that we're protected to make sure we get the revenue that the ordinance is intended to bring in to the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Gerard Bioso, Bioso?
Correct the first time.
Got it. Thank you.
My name is Jerry Bioso. I'm a 37-year resident of Drums. I'm a lifelong resident of Luzerne County. And I'm not in favor of the I'm in favor of putting a weight restriction on Honey Road for Honey Hole Road for the following reasons. One, it's it's a great road for bicyclists to ride along, but it's too narrow to to support any kind of truck traffic and bicyclists at the same time. Number two, Nesskepek State Park is on both sides of Honey Hole Road. And along Honey Hole Road, there are parking areas for hiking trails. And they are small parking areas. All you need is a big truck going a little too fast along these windy roads. And it's destined for disaster. I'm also not in favor of issuing permits to for heavy trucks to go on that road because once you get one heavy truck on that road, it's it's like if I see one truck on that road, that's no re that's a good reason for me to be on that road also. So I'd be against having permits to travel on that road. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Chris Blazek, Blazek, sorry.
My name is Dr. Chris Blazek. I'm also a resident of Beach Mountain Lakes and Drums in Drums, Pennsylvania. And I am on the Board of Directors at Beach Mountain Lakes. Like the two previous speaker or all previous speakers, I support the weight limits on Honey Hole Road for a number of reasons. One, I reviewed the report by the study by Barry in Inslet. I looked at the geometric portion of where they said the road was 20 feet wide. And Beach Mountain Lakes are 20 feet wide. And on occasion, we have a heavy truck come through to deliver to the clubhouse. Our routes are 25 mile an hour speed limit. And there are seven stop signs in the distance from the gate of 309 to the clubhouse. So the truck, so a truck can't or anybody just can't pick up a lot of speed. My concern is that on Honey Hole Road, there are no stop signs. You can you get on a 309 and you drive in Nesskepek State Park with no stop signs. And I worry about the speed that a truck could pick up in that point regarding the the pavement. From the pictures in the report, you can see that there are that from 2018, you can see that there are lots of cracks in the road. And unlike Scotch that ages well, roads don't. So I suspect that since 2018, the road has not improved any. Looking at the volume of traffic on there in they have four sections where they grant total percentages. Each of the four areas, class two and three automobile vehicles, class two is autos, class three is is pickup trucks and maybe a utility vehicle. They count in most cases better than 92% of the traffic. So if the road has been deteriorated, 92% of the traffic all the time, you can't have to believe that heavy trucks are going to do the same damage. And like Jerry who spoke before, I also do not support permits for for the road because if one person sees that they're going to figure they can do it, police can't be everywhere enforcing it no matter who's enforcing it, whether it's Butler Township or the state police. And and there was also Beach Mountain is overrun by deer. And from Nesskepek State Park everywhere, if a heavy truck is coming down and hits a deer, there's no shoulders on the road. So the truck could easily lose control in the dark. There's no lights. Could lose control in the dark and and cause damage to the homes on their lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blazek. Any other members of the public that wish to speak on this specific ordinance? None of the other slips have this one checked. Just want to double check. I don't see anybody on the Zoom with their hand up either. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion second.
All favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Oppose? All right, the first public hearing is adjourned. We will move right on to the next public hearing. So it is 6:02. We'll call the meeting to order. We already did the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. We have a roll call, please. Mr. Venus? Mr. Venus? Oh, you're muted.
Here, sorry.
Sorry.
Yep. Mr. Loscavage?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
Mr. McDermott?
Yeah.
Mr. McInlin?
Present.
Mr. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Lovett?
Here.
Here. Present. Okay, it looks like so for public comment on this is public comment on the proposed ordinance amending the capital plan budget for Luzerne County. Ms. Hartman, do you want to speak for this one?
Yeah, sure. Hi, Elizabeth Hartman, Hannah River Township. Not against sheriffs getting any money. I'm just wondering how we have this money left in the capital budget to transfer it. So did this money come available after a tax hike that the county citizens got? And does this have to do with the American Rescue money coming in and now it freed up some capital money? So if this money's all wasn't there when we did his budget, we took all the stuff away. I get that. I think some of it should go back. But where did all this extra money come from now? Because it's a large amount. I'm not going to quote it because I said numbers wrong last time. But we're giving him back a lot of money and it's a lot of weapons, tasers, posters. If you look down the thing, it's a left-handed, a right-handed, a left-handed, a right-handed. I know growing up, I was the only lefty in my in my things. I don't understand how we need a left-handed and a right-hand and a left-handed and a right-handed. Like, I want him to get the money, but I'm curious to know how that money became free that we have that to put now back into his budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hartman. Lisa Fisher? Did I say that right? Fisher, got it.
This is regards to the
Oh, no, no. Sorry, that'll come later. You have the public hearing checked, but I will check you for the right spot. I don't see any others for the 5:50 public hearing that this one. Does anyone else from the public wish to speak on this? Anybody on the Zoom?
Motion to adjourn, second.
All favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Oh. All right, the second public hearing is adjourned. Are you guys okay to just keep going? All right. All right, it is 6:04. We will call the voting session to order. We already did the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. We have a roll call, please.
Present.
Mr. Loscavage?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
Mr. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. McInlin?
Present.
Mr. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Lovett?
Here.
All present? Do you want to just announce the executive session?
Yes. This evening, we had an executive session to discuss three litigation matters. One related to a prisoner case in prison. And we had counsel, the attorney's company, discuss that matter with us. And explain how we would be able to settle it and give technical decisions whether or not economically we want to settle the case or proceed forward through litigation. Then the next one was a settlement of another case that was really just a terror. There was bill that wasn't paid, that should have been paid. And the other one was a discussion of possible new mass court litigation, which we will be able to join in as a
Thank you, Attorney Skey. We'll move on to recognitions and ceremonial proclamations. I have three. The first one, whereas every year, tens of thousands of American workers are killed by workplace injuries and occupational diseases. And whereas every year, tens of thousands more American workers are permanently disabled and millions more are made ill. And whereas the Greater Wilkesboro Labor Labor Council and concerned citizens of Luzerne County are determined to prevent these tragedies by locally observing National Workers Memorial Day on April 27, 2023, as a day to remember these victims of workplace deaths, injuries, and disease. And whereas through the observance of this day, the Greater Wilkesboro Labor Council renews its efforts to seek stronger safety and health protections, better standards, and enforcement, and fair and just compensation, and redictates itself to improving safety and health in every American workplace. Now, therefore, we, the Luzerne County Council, do recognize the efforts of the Greater Wilkesboro Labor Labor Council in conducting its annual Workers Memorial Day program and proclaim April 27 in the year 2023 as Workers Memorial Day in Luzerne County. The next one is for Luzerne County libraries. Whereas today's libraries are more about what they can do with and for their communities and not just about what they have on the shelves. And whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions, often the heart of their cities, towns, schools, and academic campuses. And whereas libraries serve people of all ages, interests, and backgrounds, providing the resources and space to engage in life learning. And whereas libraries offer equipment and professional staff support to utilize technology programs and services, often free or with nominal charges to users. And whereas libraries are a resource for all, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. And whereas we recognize librarians as information professionals who provide expertise, services, and guidance for patrons to access credible sources of material, making their own informed decisions about the world today. And whereas libraries provide access to and display a wide range of information, not just a majority opinion or single perspective. And whereas librarians hold the professional values of diversity, equality, and inclusion to meet the needs of all users. And whereas the PA Forward Literacy is Power Initiative highlights how libraries and staff encourage literacy in basic information, civic social, health, and financial, which contributes to greater personal and community success. And whereas America is celebrating National Library Week, including April 25 as National Library Workers Day and the immeasurable contributions made by library workers. April 26 as National Outreach Day, showing library services are not limited to their physical location. And April 27 as Take Action for Libraries Day, encouraging community support for libraries. Now, therefore, we, Luzerne County Council, proclaim National Library Week, April 23 to the 29, 2023, in Luzerne County. During this week, we encourage all residents to visit our libraries and explore all of the offer to help move PA forward. And the last one, we have Mental Health Month proclamation. Whereas there is a proven proven connection between good mental health and overall personal health. And whereas mental illnesses affect almost every family in America. And whereas people with mental illnesses recover if given necessary services and supports in their communities. And whereas people with mental illnesses make important contributions to our families and our communities. And whereas millions of adults and children are disabled by mental illnesses every year. And whereas only one out of two people with a serious form of mental illness seeks treatment for his or her mental illness. And whereas stigma and fear of discrimination keep many who benefit from mental health services from seeking help. And whereas research shows that the most effective way to reduce stigma is through personal contact with someone with a mental illness. And whereas good mental health is critical to the well-being of our families, communities, schools, and businesses. And whereas greater public awareness about mental illnesses can change negative attitudes and behaviors toward people with mental illnesses. Now, therefore, we, Luzerne County Council, do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2023, as Mental Health Month and call upon all Luzerne County citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illnesses, reducing stigma and discrimination, and promoting appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illness. Thank you. Any deletions?
Mr. Griffin? I'd like to make a motion to number one, only because there is no enforcement mechanism in the ordinance. And also, Controller stated, there is no giving of the financial piece of citation.
Okay, we have a motion to remove one. Do you have a second?
I will second.
Roll call on removing one?
Before, could I make a statement?
Yeah.
Also, like, I'm all in favor of the overall ordinance of restricting weight on that road and many other county roads too. And the three residents who went up today and spoke, I agree with it. Should be done. I just think we're kind of putting the cart before the horse here. I know we got a letter signed by three township supervisors that at the end of last year. But something of this magnitude with with money and fees and enforcement using local police, I believe Butler Township should have passed a public resolution or ordinance to that effect, stating and clarifying all those points. The public has a right in Butler Township to show up and show up at those meetings and speak out for or against the change in that ordinance and refining the ordinance. For instance, Good Point brought up only 20-foot-wide road. I mean, that's a really dangerous situation. Trucks going on there can barely fit a car on the other side of the road. And I just, I hear three residents speak tonight and although they generally have the same approval in their voices, one of them stated about the big trucks a little differently than the other two residents. And I just think Butler Township should first pass their ordinance from their township. And then the county to look at that and go, boy, there it is. Let's let's do our end right now. Because who is going to keep the revenue? It's not their road. So they cite drivers, they collect fines. It doesn't state anywhere. Well, they can say, well, we'll keep the revenue. Well, okay, but that was never defined anywhere by our ordinance. They don't have an ordinance. And I just think the public down there should have had an opportunity to speak up on the issue. And I just think we're going backwards. That's my
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Sure, move number one. Do we have a roll call, please?
Should we speak about the health of the ordinance?
And this is a motion to remove it, so it's technically not even on the agenda yet. So if it stays, you can speak to it.
Just some of the information as being
Go ahead.
is not accurate.
Yeah, go ahead.
So the ordinance process for this particular ordinance, there is a step-by-step process which we're at with with you guys passing this ordinance to move forward. That is step three of about 17 steps. So there is a lot more to be done. After this, it goes to PennDOT for their approval. Many of the things that you were talking about as far as the fees and the enforcement is not under our control. That's part of the ordinance that PennDOT dictates. So municipal would would be and state police would have the ability to enforce that. And we already know the municipal wants to do that. State police, I spoke to state police lieutenant from Hazelton. He said they would be able to enforce it as well because of the type of ordinance it is. The fines typically normally township fines, half goes to township and half goes to state. And then how the county gets that their money, their part of it, is through the court process. So the fine, for example, maybe $25, but court costs are $140 in an example of a typical $25 fine. So so we would get court costs for sure. But what we need to understand is that's not the source of revenue that is going to maintain this road. The source of the revenue to maintain to maintain this road is based on the heavy volume of traffic. We, if we were to cut off all trucks on that road, I understand what what what, you know, the pain that is to have the trucks on the road. But understand the extra cost that everyone's going to incur because they can't haul their goods and certain goods to wherever they need to. Trucks need to get out that road. What we're looking at is identifying heavy trucks over six-ton that are frequent flyers, frequently passing on that road. They are the ones that are going to cause the maintenance requirement. And so one of the steps is developing a an excessive maintenance agreement with each company that we see is traveling that road frequently. They are the people that are going to be that will be, if you want to call it, enforcing it, okay? The daily one truck that goes out there to deliver a refrigerator or whatever to a to a resident or to pass through there once in a month, that's not a person that is going to be, we're going to go after. It's not that that's been happening. This could continue to happen to happen. Right now, we're looking at a change in that area that is going to deteriorate that road very quickly if we don't do something about it. They're moving into that area. They're not there now. We heard of what's coming. It's it's going to destroy the road in short term because of volume and the weight.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
Perfect. So you stated, it's understood that township will enforce it, state police will enforce it.
Yes.
Also, county sheriff's department could enforce it.
I don't think they have vehicle code.
It's a county road.
Can you do? Okay, they could.
The county owns the road.
Yes. Yes. Yeah, they just have to have, I guess, the ability to enforce.
Pennsylvania vehicle code, right?
Thank you.
Want to follow up? I mean, it's just about due diligence. Okay, once again, you know, I was just looking up borough ordinance in their township. And it actually states the fine under their their fine penalty section that actually shows that a person can also be imprisoned up to 10 days in jail if they don't pay the fines. So they are, they did define it. I mean, it's very similar to our ordinance.
Right.
But they go a couple steps further. And I do have to agree with Mr. Thornton regarding a municipality by letter is not an official act. It's just stating that those three members are in support of the
Understood.
Okay. An official act would be a little bit more, it would have more teeth. You know, resolution, I mean, they should realistically send a resolution over to us stating that they're officially in support of that by taking a vote in their own chamber and then bringing it. We shouldn't be going and trying to fix something that that they want, but but you know, there's there's missing details in between what they want, what we want, and how it's all going to transpire.
Sure.
And you know, you're talking about citing people too, or citing truck drivers, which then have the ability to go to court. And then, you know, what happens? How are we going to enforce that mechanism in this ordinance? When it's really not, I understand the vehicle code. But we don't have a partnership agreement in place at this point with Butler. The state police are very limited in their resources and highly unlikely that they're going to enforce the county ordinance. Because, you know, there are very few in fact between now and township.
All right, excuse me. I'm going to interject respectfully. I think we should vote on this. It's to remove from the agenda. No agenda has been adopted and we've had lengthy conversation on something when we don't even have an agenda yet. So we have a motion in a second to remove item number one. Do we have a roll call, please? Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Mr. Venus?
No, sorry.
Mr. Loscavage?
Yes, because it's incomplete.
Mr. Lombardo?
No.
Mr. McDermott?
No.
Mr. McInlin?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes, because it's incomplete.
Mr. Lovett?
No.
Mr. Ray?
No.
Or yes. Stays on the agenda.
Motion's adopted, agenda?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Oppose? Agenda's adopted. We now have public comment on voting session agenda items. Some of these slips don't have a check mark, so I'll just go through it. Dolores Vota? Yeah. What did you want to speak on behalf of? Was it co-part? Okay, then we'll wait till later. Controller Griffith?
I'm going to speak on item one, three, and eight. Item one, I addressed in the public hearing session. With all due respect to the Division Head for Operations, the Pennsylvania vehicle code does not define. It defines if you're overweight, but it does not define who collects the fine. It does not define who enforces it. It does define what constitutes the weight limit. So if you put it at six-ton and you're over by five, it constitutes what the fine would be for five-ton overweight. But it doesn't say who collects that fine. If we're responsible for the road, we should be collecting any monies that come from the fine in the discussion, whether it's court fees or otherwise. We're not going to get that. Butler Township has an agreement to take over county roads when they meet their specification. But we're going to maintain this road, hang signs, police it, make sure all the stuff is done for it. I'm not against the weight limit. I'm just saying that the ordinance needs to be more complete. It needs to put more teeth in it so we get the money that we're deserving from the fines if, in fact, we're going to put that ordinance in place. And because you're going to get repercussions from truck drivers that want to use that road that now have to pay a fee to use them. And because you're going to get repercussions from truck drivers that want to use that road that now have to pay a fee to use them. So who's going to get the grief for that? It's going to be council. It's not going to be Butler Township. And clearly Butler Township should have passed an ordinance to ask the council to consider putting a weight limit on that road by ordinance. So those folks who came to the podium to speak here would have had the opportunity to address it at the local level and then come here and address it as well. That didn't happen. So I think they missed the vote on that whole issue. I'm not against it. You can amend the ordinance and you can put some of that stuff in there to make it comprehensive enough that you could pass it. That's within council's purview to do that. But I don't think the way the ordinance now reads is is something that we need to pass in the best interest of the people. Item number three, booth management, I think booth management contract needs to be put out for bid. I understand that we want to extend their contract. Extending their contract circumvents the charter section. It says anything over twenty five thousand has to be bid. That circumvents that part of the charter. That was put in the charter for reasons so we would get the best price for the services that we ask for from vendors. It wasn't so we could just agree to give a nine hundred thousand dollar contract to a vendor without making them bid for it. Let her bid for it. Let Booth put bid in. If she's the low bidder, great. If she's the only bidder, that's fine too. But at least we'll be sure that we're getting the best price for the services that we're requesting. And lastly, number eight is the, I think the issue about selling a piece of property. The only thing I have is on the cover letter. It says in financing anticipated revenue of six hundred dollars in the property listed on the tax rolls. The county doesn't receive any money for repository property. That all goes to unless we get a bid high enough to cover the cost, all that money goes to tax claim. Just so people are aware that the taxpayers are not getting a windfall of six hundred dollars for selling a property. We are benefiting by getting it off the tax.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I don't believe it's not our property.
It's not a repository. It's county property.
That's not coming. That's.
It's county owned. It's not.
Oh, okay. I apologize. I was just stating.
Thank you. James Schweitzer? Is that on the agenda or non-agenda?
On non-agenda.
Okay, we'll wait till the last one. Henry, is yours non-agenda as well? Okay. Ms. Hartman?
I was a department on number three. I agree with Walter that it should be put out for bid. We hired booth management to take care of this. We got into a big mess with council and how the whole thing went through, and I think we need to look at other providers to see if somebody can guide us in the right direction because we weren't guided the proper way with booth management.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Mr. Fitzgerald?
TJ Fitzgerald, I guess I kept on saying Nanny Coke, but it's Newport Township, I guess. Apologize. Newport Township on the agenda as far as booth management. And we always, I'm very disappointed in government at a hall and I I think we don't in this is county. I think we do have a lot of people that care, but we don't do our due diligence and I've been at this mic a lot. Not with the answers, but how we got to the answers. With the right to know like when with the election, who we hired and now with booth management. It's do we set, do we do our due diligence before? Like Mr. Thornton just said on the road, all we want is to do due diligence, but of course it didn't pass because we're not willing to take a couple of weeks to do the extra effort. You know, measure twice, cut once. We don't do that at council. We cut fast and furious. But we pay to citizens, pay the consequences all the time. We pay more and more. Booth management, this is a year and a half fiasco. Like, you know, it's just one thing after another that we just don't do our due diligence. And I understand you guys are part time and I know most of you care. But it's why I don't think we should have this type of government. Should go back to the council, full-time people. I just, you know, as far as booth management, we have to send it out to bid. We screwed up so far. Don't screw up more. Let's let's do it right. I mean, who we gave the money to is ridiculous. I don't think anybody in the county thinks that Mitchell's plan was great. And everybody agreed just to just get it over with. That's all we did was we just got it over with. And that's not what you're supposed to do. You're not supposed to do it with your children. You're not supposed to do it with your relationships and you definitely don't do it with our money. And that's that's sad. I'm not pounding my fist like I usually do because I'm actually ready to cry and give up. And and I don't like to give up. And I just wish that you guys would do better for us. You know, and and as far as the weight system, I just, I just wish you guys wouldn't just do the path of least resistance and do some due diligence and 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 you know, that's all. I just wish that you guys would not kick the kid around and and send it out to bill. We're intelligent people. We know that sometimes it takes a little longer to do something right. Just communicate with us, be transparent with us. That's all we want. Due to due diligence, let the public know, let the press know, we'll back it. It takes a little longer. Just do it right. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other members in the public? Couple hands up.
The three of us spoken, four of us spoken favor to weight limits, but one thing we didn't say specifically is the the study on the road unequivocally supports weight limits. We don't want limits, but the the report from twenty eighteen unequivocally supports weight limits on the road. I just wanted to say that.
Sir, what was your name, please?
Sir.
Your name and town.
Sorry, Chris Boyzick.
Okay.
And Kendra?
Yeah.
What's, I didn't, he never says his name in township.
I'm sorry, Greg Kurt something.
He worked, he worked for the county.
Division, yeah.
Sorry. Yeah, it wasn't public comment.
I like how you dress like a lawyer, so I was really scared.
Hey.
You too, Carl.
Now I can see the back of that head, pal.
Lawyers are online. His mouth is moving.
Jamie Walsh from Ross Township. I brought my son tonight for his first public meeting, fifteen-year-old. That's Logan. So we were, we have golf league this tonight, so we resurrendly. Couple of things, just number one, as far as it being incomplete. I would hope that council votes to table that and and not pass it. Because you can't vote on a resolution. It's incomplete. This is happening all over at school districts, other places where I attend public meetings. And and it just sets up for the future. It's just going to create problems if you pass an incomplete resolution. Not that I disagree with the weight limit and all that other stuff, but and then last, the second one is booth management. Couple of things. Number one, booth management originally started that program. It was supposed to be secret. And which I think was bad to begin with, and I think that's why you all suffered so bad through the process. Because had it been transparent from the from the get-go, it probably would have went a lot smoother. And the other thing is I didn't like how booth management threatened you guys by stating that the government's going to come and take the money back if you don't hurry up and make a decision. It was sixty million dollars. I don't think that's fair. And you you remember the meeting when she was talking on the on Zoom and saying, well, you know, if you don't, you don't make a decision, you know, that they could, they could, they could. It was like threatening you that if you don't hurry up and make a decision, they're going to take that money back. And and that's not cool either. So I just think that there's probably a better consulting firm out there. And I think you should look around and again, do your due diligence on that as well. We're all here. We all pay taxes in this county and I just think it's worth it to the taxpayers. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public that want to speak on agenda items? Anybody on the Zoom? I don't see any hands up, so we will move forward. We have a motion to. All favor? Abstentions? Oppose? All right, moving on. Number one, motion to adopt ordinance imposing restrictions as to the weight of vehicles operated upon county roads.
Motion.
Another question. I just, I want to reiterate that I am all for imposing weight restrictions on those roads. They're beating up the roads. It's a big problem. I'm all for that. But I can't support it. The reasons I stated earlier, it's county road. I think we should get the revenue from it, not the state. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Perry.
Attorney Steve, did the office of law review this or?
They did.
They did. Are you fine with it? Are you approving it? Because my vote is whatever you pass.
I am.
Ms. McDermott?
In reference to Butler Township passing ordinance, technically, they can't pass an ordinance on a road that they don't own because they don't own it. So maybe they could have voted to recommend, but not pass an ordinance because they don't own.
Mr. McGinnly?
First of all, I heard what Mr. Kurt said and I heard what the other gentleman here tonight. Number one, I think we can put anything in ordinance that we want. Send it forward to Penn Dot. If they have a problem, they'll tell us about it. So I think definitely I'd like to make an amendment with the enforcement specified to the fact that it's state police, public township, municipal, police force, whatever. It's not the county in any way, shape, or form. That's my first. And then the second one is any monies generated by permits or fines, county gets percentage of that money, whatever it might be. You know, we're going to have to, if we're going to allow trucks to go on our roads by permits, we're going to need money to pay for that road and get the upkeep that needs to be addressed. We can't just allow the permit to go someplace where we don't get it. We have to get the permit money in order to keep the road maintained in the proper fashion. Those are two critical elements, I think, of the ordinance. So my first one is about enforcement, First Amendment. So I make that a motion.
Yeah. Mr. McGinnly, okay, so you want to amend it to the state police can?
State police?
Yep.
The municipal police. I guess Butler Township.
Yeah, municipal police department.
But, you know, the county is not enforcing it.
Okay. And it's, we have a motion in a second on that First Amendment.
I have a question. Mr. Kurt, do you want to respond to that? I'm not sure.
Absolutely. So the state police and municipal police department are required to enforce it. That is, that's absolute positive. I'm sure Harry could concur. The fines, the fines for the fines, the bonding, we'll call it, which is a cost that is going to be determined by the people that are going to be destroying the road, okay? That fine money is, or that bonding money is coming to the township or to to the county, apologize. So so what you're asking for is within this ordinance, the whole purpose of the ordinance is to get this money from those entities. And it's it's designed to rebuild, to repair the road on, based on an agreement that we will have, we don't have it yet. With, and you can't have it yet until you have the ordinance, that we would have with these companies that are frequently carrying heavy loads across that road. Those are the people that we're concerned with. We're not concerned with one truck that passes through, you know, every so often. That's happening now. It's not causing us unexpected damage to the road. The damage is being caused, will be caused by the heavy loads, high capacity, large quantities. That's what the what the ordinance is designed to to deal with. And we would get that, those that, those monies to repair the road. That's that's all purpose. In the agreement that would, that we would develop with the organization, the company that would be part of this, we would hammer out all, how that would all happen. That's not, we're not there yet. So once we have the ordinance in place, then you go, we're following steps that are are required by Penn Dot in order for it to be approved. We're not jumping ahead and doing anything that we shouldn't be. We're following exactly what is required by Penn Dot to enact a limit on a load for a county road. So there's, there's nothing different that we can do. The same what's within the ordinance. Either either in the ordinance itself or it's referred to outside the ordinance on on other, like, like the like the enforcement, that's part of the vehicle code, which it's referred to in the ordinance. They don't put that within the ordinance, just so you all know. Because the vehicle code changes often. So if you put that in every ordinance, then every time a vehicle code changes, you have to change hundreds of ordinances. So you refer to it because it is a big code and it changes. So you're always referencing the latest vehicle code.
I agree with Mr. Kurt and we're not trying to make anything different here in the ordinance. But Mr. McGinnly's amendments are simply very specifically clarifying language that that's not there. Now, I get, I get it's in the state code. I don't think the state code states that the county is not responsible. It says, who is responsible? Doesn't say who's not responsible. That's my only point. I'm only, I agree with him because it clearly specifically states now that the county is not responsible for enforcing on that road. And the Second Amendment clearly specifically states the county overseeing those revenues. I get it. That's how bonds work and that's how it's going to happen, but I like that the language is in there. That's all I'm saying.
Madam Chair.
Sorry, Carl. Hold on. Kevin had his hand up. We'll go Q next, Carl.
Okay, sorry about that.
The second part of this that makes me nervous is when you talk about the fee schedule that you're going to hammer out with the offender, right? What if they come back, we pass this and we say, okay, we have this weight limit, and then they come back and say, well, you know what? Twenty dollars a truck. And they destroy the road in one year and there's no road mess. And we're, let me finish and then you can go ahead. And then we're stuck putting this road back together at three million dollars. Then they go to court and fight us on it and they say, hey, you know what? Show us another road in this county where you have that fee attached because every truck's a volunteer. And now it looks like we're targeted. That's, I'm telling you right now, that's what I'm afraid of. So I just, I want to feel better about the whole fee structure. I mean, what what if we have a dollar amount we're not happy with and we can never put that road back?
We would not accept an agreement that we're not happy with. And if we don't accept an agreement we're not happy with and they travel down that road, they're going to get fined because that's that's law.
Okay, wait, guys, hold on. Ms. McDermott and so did Mr. Urban, but Carl's been waiting. Mr. Venus?
I just want to clarify. So it sounds to me like either what, you know, if we put in specifically with regards to Mr. McGinnly's amendments, it does not change anything. It is the, I mean, it's no harm, no foul. So we can put this in clarify. It doesn't hurt the the underlying ordinance at all, correct?
I don't, I don't know that because it has to get approved by Penn Dot. So if we're saying that we're not responsible for I don't, can we even do that? Like a police department say, we're not responsible for enforcing law?
No, the police department can't say.
We're not a police department.
We're confusing these here. Under the vehicle code, and this is going to be adopted and it's going to go through Penn Dot and a lot more. We, much more than we do. If you look at the vehicle code and it says that there's a violation for going through a stop sign. That's it. It's a violation to go through a stop sign. It doesn't say this municipality, this municipality, if this is in Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh gets paid attention to it. It's just in the code. Law enforcement enforces the code. We don't get to choose the violation fee structure or any of that. That's all done by the state. So if you get a ticket and you have to go in, your ticket is going to be, is going to have all the costs associated. way more than the price of just a ticket. So if you have a speeding ticket and then seventy-five dollars, you're gonna come out of there with three hundred and fifty dollars, some of which are fees that go to the county. These are all run, they all go through our, we should get every ticket that goes through our court system on our match records. And the rest of it, though, some of the volume goes back to the state. Now, that's just a violation. Then there's a part that talks about bonding. So if, and I think what we're talking about is that if there's companies that are going to regularly put their vehicles across the road, they can get into basically buy a certificate that allows them to do that. They'll put up money, money in bonding and that money is held in our treasury. And the money is to be used to fix the road. So it's not negotiated for each vehicle. It's just, it's buying a permit by the company and each truck would have to have a permit to go. Now, if it's just a random truck, it's not supposed to be there. So if there's a, under the vehicle code, if there is an Amazon truck, if it's light vehicle traffic to go through, it's allowed to do that. But on regular trucks, it would be a permitted vehicle. They get a permit. If they don't, they'll get a ticket every single time they go through. They have to do, have to work fast and all that. Tickets they have to present to the, to the government ministry.
And, and the fee structure for this agreement that we would have is not, is not completed by us and the, the company alone. A third party is required as part of this whole process. A third party would, would detail what the difference is between normal wear and tear and excessive wear and tear. And the excessive part is where the costs would be incurred from by the trucking company. We're still responsible for our, our normal wear and tear on the road. It's the excessive damage and that is going to be inspected. It's, there's a whole process to, to manage that. And, and, you know, every six months or so, these are things that will have to be done, you know, to ma, to maintain the road and, and, and get the funding from the organization that is causing the damage to it.
Thank you. Ms. McDermott?
Section six of the ordinance, it says permits and security. No permit will be issued until the application is approved by Loser County Council at a scheduled public meeting. And if required, security has been posted with the Loser County Treasurer. So any money, it has to go through a senate before. So any company that wants to apply for the permit still has to be approved by council.
Thank you. Mr. Urban?
I mean, with that said, do you realize somebody, permits may come through to county council at that point in time too? I mean, how much additional, I mean?
Again, it's not for the everyday truck.
Right.
So it's not gonna be a lot of permits. It's going to be specific to the heavy colors that are on that road that have passed through it.
Repetitive, I'd say, right? Like the, the company is established there and they have repetitive trucking, traffic going through the road. Those would be the ones that would have to come to us for a permit.
Well, we don't know how many companies there are.
We would know, but the township would.
Well, it's not an issue now, so we don't have.
Well, then if it's not an issue now, we're gonna put, put this ordinance through. It's not an issue now. So, I mean, let, let me talk respectfully here.
Sure.
You know, like, you, you, you should have, I mean, honestly, gotten an agreement with Butler Township first, saying that, hey, we'll, we'll patrol it. I mean, this is a county road. I mean, the agreement should have been like, you, you, you bring the agreement in and say, hey, Butler Township, you know, they agreed that they're gonna patrol the road before you even put an ordinance in place. Because once we put an ordinance in place, it's county law. As incomplete as it is, it's still gonna be law effective in fifteen days, okay? Which mean it could be enforced at any time. And if there's a fee schedule on tickets, honestly, if Butler Township or the state police write the ticket out, there's gonna be a big percentage that actually goes to them as revenue. So we're actually penalizing those drivers at this point in time. And, and Loser County may only get the court costs and very miniscule part of that amount if we can't control that fee schedule. And the other thing is that these permit fees probably need to be consistent because you can't charge one company a different price than another. So if, you know, if two companies have X amount of trucks, each truck's gonna be X price for each permit. You're not gonna say one company's gonna pay fifty dollars for trucking another that's, that's a hundred dollar truck.
Like that's something that council will have to.
Right, but, but, and, and I honestly think you should have brought the one cheater then with the entire process.
I have.
Well, why didn't you give it to us before we go through this, this whole chain of events and waste our time? I mean, don't you think, out of full disclosure?
Okay. We have a call to question, so we have a motion and a second on for Mr. McGinnly's amendment for the enforcement to limit it to the state police and the municipal police department. Clear a roll call, please, on the amendment, only the amendment. Not the fees, not the fees. This is literally just the enforcement. Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis Scaveng?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Ms. McGinnly?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Reddell? No. Okay, so that amendment passes. We have the Second Amendment was to, the, the fees collected, so the fees and the, you gotta say the permit fees, the fines, how do you wanna?
Fines, I don't fix enough, permit fees and bonds.
Okay, permit fees and bonds, the county gets a percentage, which I don't, do you want to clarify that? Because I think the county is getting the entire bond amount right now.
That's where it should be.
It's in there. Yeah, that's already in there. So I don't know, could you specify your exact amendment? Because that's already in there.
I'm fine with it.
Wait, do you want me to pull? Let's, let's read it just to make sure. Yeah, it was that part. Okay. All right, so.
We did have, we did have.
There was a, okay, okay. He was your amendment. Okay. All right, so we can move on to a vote on the actual ordinance. Roll call. This is on the full ordinance with the amendment for the enforcement. Yep. Mr. Lewis Scaveng?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnly?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Uh, yes, he did a sloppy word.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Reddell? Yes. Motion passes. Number two, motion to adopt ordinance limiting the capital plan budget for Loser County. This is the sheriff's one that we had the public area.
Motion, Venus.
That'll be a second, Carl, because Mr. Lombardo made the, made the motion.
That works.
Another question after Ms. Hartman's question, just so it's answered, she sat down. Where did the money come from?
Did you want to address it?
No, she asked a question that I just thought someone should answer.
On the capital plan, if you remember, you have the audit, this money that was not spent, so it was there available. We took two million dollars, this council, and put it in the capital plan. So we would have some money to do capital projects because the amount of money in the capital plan was very minimal at that time.
Right.
So that's how the two million dollars became part of the plan.
So it was in reserve fund cap?
Yeah, it wasn't a reserve, but as a result of the audit, what was available, the public, the expenses for the year.
Okay.
And we took capital, two million dollars, this council took capital, made a budget amendment with that money and get capital.
So that's where the money came from. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood you. I, I thought you were. Any other questions on that? All right, roll call.
I think though, sorry to interrupt. This says the capital plan, and some of the information we had said part of the capital plan, part from the R money. So this ordinance would only be for the capital plan?
This is the capital plan.
Okay.
Yes.
The second part of that, if you look at your information, they're asking for like forty-seven of everything. I think currently we have thirty-five sheriffs, deputies, et cetera. Some of that equipment, et cetera, has an expiration date. So if we buy forty-seven and put twelve in a closet and two years or three years or four years from now, they said, oh, it's reached expiration. No, it's not useful. As a result of that, I would recommend that we buy forty of every item that they requested. That gives them the thirty-five plus five more for any new hires, so that they're not stuck, so that it gets higher. The second part of that is, and I think people remember, we gave buildings and grounds money for doors and locks and things for county facilities. Second part of this request is magnetic locks for facilities. I think there should be coordination between those two groups to figure out what we should actually have. I don't know which locks are the right ones or what's necessary to have. But I don't think we should be giving money to two different parties to accomplish the same feat.
Okay, did you want to speak to it? Sorry.
If I be allowed.
Yeah. I was just gonna ask if the first, if the first part of what Mr. McGinnly is saying has anything to do with the union agreement? If there's an issue with that, purchasing.
Well, the amount of money is based on forty-seven.
Right. Yeah, is, is that in the union contract that, you know, one sheriff gets a new taser? All of them have to get a new taser, which means all of the?
The only reason I think we're getting new tasers is they're all expired.
Right.
We don't, we don't have that. That's something that the taser company tells you. It's like, sir, like the computer stuff, you know, we will not support it at the end of twenty twenty-three when you're forced to make a decision.
Okay, so we've asked for forty-seven of everything. We've asked for the funding of forty-seven of everything. We're not gonna immediately purchase forty-seven of everything. So we're gonna get vests for the people that we have and we'll keep the funding on hand for when we do have our full complement.
I actually have to say.
That's not how capital plan works.
Well, that's how we're, that's how we have, have it set up. Because why would we order vests when we wouldn't be able to size them for the correct people?
And if I may, Mr. McGinnly, and I apologize, um, so one concern I would have with the, I mean, we do have staffing concerns over there. I don't want to not be hiring sheriffs because we don't have equipment for those sheriffs. So that would be, I mean, I understand that we only have thirty-five and there's forty-seven. So, I mean, I would, I would be interested in the sheriff's opinion on it. It's just, again, I don't want to put us in a position where we could get more than forty sheriffs hired. We're always shorthanded over there and we can't do it because we don't have the relevant equipment for them, that they need to do their job.
Sheriff Shavsky on the, on the Zoom and has his hand up.
I am, yeah, I'm available. I, I just wanted to speak to it. I mean, we do, we ask for that number because that would be at full complement. Plus, it's not only, you don't just get one for everybody, you have to have some in excess. That's for if they break down, if something breaks with it, if the niche repairs, things like that. Additionally, contractually, there are items in, within that group of items that are contractual. So yes, we would have to have them. With regard to what Lieutenant Foie said, I, we're not going to purchase the ballistic vest for people who aren't here. However, the hard rifle plates would be purchased because that's a one-size-fits-all type of situation. And the other vest, we would only be able to purchase for what we have. And then there would be about five in reserve that are, again, kind of a, a larger vest that can go over almost anyone, kind of a one-size-fits-all. And that's what we do currently with the employees that we have coming in. These vests are made to order. They're not, you can't go to a store and take them off the shelf. They have to be custom cut. So what we do is we have a few in reserve that when we hire deputies, you know, they don't fit them perfectly, but they provide the required amount of coverage, excuse me, in overlap that's required for them by contract.
Thank you. Did, did you want to address the locks too, if you don't mind? Mr. McGinnly brought up the, the magnetic locks.
Yeah, we did, so certainly. So we, we talked with Bill McIntosh from operations. We just wanted to, you know, we're conferring with them just to confirm that we are not buying the same thing. The locking mechanisms, what we do is work with operations to make sure it meets their specs whilst at the same time is meeting our security specs. We're both in agreement that they all need to be changed. So we are in agreement on them. Their funding, I'm not a hundred percent sure what it's for. But, you know, we will definitely confirm with them prior to, you know, both of us doing the same thing, obviously.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, can we have a roll call on this, please?
Make a limit that we buy forty of everything.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call on just the amendment.
Forty of everything?
Or they have forty-seven, we would buy forty. That would give them thirty-five plus five in reserve.
On the question, they could come back and ask for more money from reserve later on.
The capital plan has money.
I just want to make sure that's what you're saying.
Yeah, absolutely, they can come back. If they ever get to forty, forty-two, or forty-five, whatever, they certainly will be able to come back.
The fund would still be there.
Yeah.
Something I just, I just want to add quickly too is what they're, what they're doing, I think we should do with other things because projects, equipment, things we buy, departments in the county come to us and ask for right down to the dollar of what they need. And then if it goes up, if something happens during the project and the cost changes, then they're back here two, three, four times like asking and we're going back and forth over, you know, little increases. And I think building contingencies in is a smart idea, whether that's forty, forty-seven. I do think building it in is smart because then they're not, you know, every time they hire somebody, they're not coming back and saying, we need one more, we need one more. Especially if we buy.
We have a contingency.
Yeah, if we buy one more.
Plus the money's there in the capital plan if they need more than that.
My question though is if they come to us and they only want to buy one or two, is it eligible under the capital plan?
Why not?
Because right now, because.
Everything that they have requested has to be eligible, whether it's one or thirty-fourty-seven.
Is that your attorney's name?
Uh, yeah, we need that when Ryan was involved. This plan, capital expenditure. You can export the taxes, you can give them that. I know this one's subject to the whole amount.
Okay.
You need to get it to one piece of that.
Right. Okay.
I have two things, actually three things, I think. So some of these items, I just know from my experience, emergency services can end up being on backorder. There are issues with that, you know, if they ordered all of this stuff now or ordered most of it now or whatever they need now. I, I think that if it's available now, then they should get it now. Maybe some of this stuff, I'm not sure, but I know that in some situations you can bulk purchase some of these items as well. I don't know if the pricing is affected by lowering, you know, something down from forty-seven to forty. I don't know.
It will be.
Okay. Well, that would certainly affect my vote. And as to the point about just coming back to council, if we need a little bit of extra money, I mean, I, I think we send mixed messages here on council when half the time we tell people, oh, come back anytime you want, come back anytime you want. You know, you can have anything you want, as long as you come back and ask us. But then, when you do come back, you know, we're gonna be fighting you tooth and nail for the same thing that you just asked for three months prior. So I'm supporting this. I'm not, I'm not voting to change anything.
Okay, uh, let's see if we, if this amendment passes, we'll have to, we'll have to do the math. But if the price changes, I don't know how we get off your math. But either way, we have a motion and a second to amend it from anything that says forty-seven to forty. Clear a roll call on the amendment only. Ms. Lombardo?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. McGinnly?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Because Officer Foie indicated the, the price would change by going down for transfer unit. I'm gonna vote no.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Lovett?
No.
Mr. Venus?
No.
Mr. Lewis Scaveng?
I'm gonna vote yes because as far as the vest go, we can't order any more than people we have because they're sized. So I think we'll still have money available there in reserve, so.
No. I meant, the amendment fails, so now we have a motion and a second for the ordinance. We have a roll call on the ordinance. Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnly?
No.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Barton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yeah.
Mr. Lovovich?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Liscadage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes. Motion passes. Number three, motion to adopt resolution authorizing use of American Rescue Plan Act funds to enter into subsequent contract with booth management. Consulting LLC for ARPA grant management services. Do we have a second?
All seconds, we can have discussion on this.
All right, we have a motion in a second.
I, I stated some of my reasons two weeks ago why I'm concerned with the nine hundred thousand we would be awarding booth manager. First of all, I think the language read two weeks ago that it was a negotiated price and, and it was, the question was asked here on the floor. I think by the time we give it to Mr. Swet's, was it truly negotiated? He indicated, no, it was not. It was a number that presented to the county. Uh, secondly, whether, whether we sit on county board, uh, council boards, legislative boards, or state or federal or local, as elected officials, we have an obligation to the taxpayers of all sorts, not just county taxpayers. I think every county elected official across the country should be looking to safeguard taxpayer money, regardless if it's federal tax, state, or local. County taxpayers certainly pay federal taxes. ARP money came from the federal government. It came from all the young people here and the rest of the residents of the county, plus many other people. I, there is no real logical reason why the sixteen or seventeen other entities that originally submitted proposals for this back last summer, when we ultimately awarded it to booth, there's no reason why we can't put this out for the duration of the process for the next two and a half years. Any entity or company that's first in doing this administration of this type of grant, and auditing of this type of grant, and follow-up, will be able to start immediately with where we're at and proceed with the entities that we agreed to award money to. There's no real, uh, reason why that can't happen. So I think in the interest of taxpayers, we need to, uh, solicit requests for proposals, RFPs, from all the other companies. Let's face it, sixty-seven counties in Pennsylvania, they all got ARP money. They're all using, most of them are using, uh, other entities.
Other side, sorry.
To administer the grant monies for their county. So, you know, there's not just one booth management, there's many other companies. And it, it really is, uh, in a sense of transparency and safeguarding of taxpayer money, put it out for bid. If booth manager comes back a little better, fine, we don't, we vote here, we vote to give it to them. But again, I, I told you two weeks ago, I wasn't happy with the way everything proceeded. It wasn't entirely booth management's fault. It was, uh, some of our fault, except blame for the council on that. However, it went off the rails very early on. We paid them three hundred fifty thousand and it went off the rails early, in my opinion, where the evaluation questionnaire for council was limited to seven or eight questions. And those questions were specifically, uh, stating whether or not they awarded this money uh, would, uh, improve racial diversity, racial equity, and that's all great, and I'm all for that. Um, I support that a thousand percent. Is it inclusive of all, you know, types of people? That, I'm all for that. But the act itself stated seven major categories of where this money would be eligible for. And some of those categories, like emergency services, fire departments, ambulances, none of that was stated in the booth questions on the evaluation form. So, and, and sewer projects and water projects, none of that was alluded to. There was no infrastructure questions on the evaluation process. So for us to sit here and honestly evaluate that application, that was a sewer project, you know, the question given to us pigeonholed us into a corner. It made it very difficult to evaluate these applications. That's why out of all the applications, a hundred and some, nobody got a passing grade. Because a lot of the applications were infrastructure and emergency services and things like that. So I was disengaged with the process from the very beginning. I still am. I, uh, and also, I, I gotta say, it was never stated here in public mean by anybody. It was maybe inference somewhere that I didn't pick up on. But if someone had said last summer from booth management or our administration here, Mr. Swet's at the time, I think, was here, not sure, but, uh, if not the previous, uh, acting county manager, that, yeah, you're, you're voting to give them three hundred fifty thousand for the first year, but there's gonna be a much larger price tag coming eight, nine months later, like nine hundred thousand or a million. I would have said, whoa, 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 let me think about this. Let's discuss that. But never, ever was a figure thrown out like that, never. It may have been mentioned, oh, this is gonna cover the first year, oh, that was the end of discussion. There was never any mention of almost a million dollars we needed to be given to them again, eight months later after we gave them three hundred fifty thousand. So for those reasons, I think to be fair and honest with the taxpayer, we need to put this out for, uh, request for proposal.
Did we find out if we put it out for an RFP? I thought we asked that question last time, but it wasn't put out.
The second part?
Well, for anybody to come back with a bid to, uh, to follow up.
I don't believe it was. No, it was not.
If you look at the agenda information from when we first ordered the contract, it says we would do yearly contracts. Yearlies, one year at a time. Now, the request here is three years together. Not for year two, three, or four.
Correct.
We have a roll call?
Hold on a second, I'm sorry, I have a question that I don't know if I'm a hundred percent prepared to ask yet. I just, I just wanted to review something in the contract really quick, though I didn't get a chance to look at.
I guess.
Go ahead, yeah, yeah, go ahead, yeah, yeah.
You know, a couple, a couple of difficulties you can look at it. They started it, they're familiar with it. What happens if we do give them a copy? That asks start from square one. And again, we don't have an RFP, we don't know. That could take them extra amount of time, extra amount of money.
That's what I was gonna ask you guys. I listened, uh, I listened to the recording of the last meeting. And I don't know if it was addressed. I don't remember right now if it was or if it wasn't. The timeline of which the money will be sent out. Like if there's a lapse in, like, who, who's in control of that, right? So if, if we don't renew the contract with booth and the money's not sent out yet, like, who oversees it in the interim until somebody new comes in or until the contract is renewed with booth? Was that addressed? Okay.
So I, I think we're kind of.
Chair, I think Ms. Booth, Ms. Booth, are you trying to say something on here?
I am.
Okay.
Hold on, just one second. Mr. Liscadage was mid-sentence, Mr. Venus.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
So what we passed at the, at the meeting to, to hire both was three hundred fifty thousand, I believe, right? There was no talk of any other dollar now. So then, I don't know how we get around putting out an RFP to have at least three people give us a price to move further into the next year with what we're doing here.
Do you wanna?
Cause we only passed that dollar now.
Do you want to let her or do you guys want to talk first?
I let Ms. Booth speak, I guess.
Okay, Ms. Booth, go ahead. Sorry.
Thank you for letting me speak. I just wanted, and I know I sent, uh, just some bullets to you all earlier, just reminding of a contract review and just a couple of things. This original solicitation went out in January of twenty, twenty twenty, January twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-two. It was, and I know that this was originally brought when our contract came up, but it was like ten vendors. We went through all presentations, then we went through multiple best and final offers. And then ultimately, um, we were recommended and our pricing was the lowest, far lower than all the other vendors at the time. And if you want, in your minutes, it would show in the conversation at the time, um, our price was substantially lower. It, there was a resolution. Ms. Councilman McGinley asked that how many projects? Because our concern at the time was that we had no idea of the level of management, cause it would be based on your approved projects. And then he asked for it to be put in a resolution that, that the three hundred fifty thousand dollars for, for the year, for this year was based on thirty projects and that we would negotiate. That's actually a resolution. So that's not something that we made, you know, that I, that was a part of the negotiation, that was the negotiation at that meeting. The contract itself is from seven, is from January eighth, twenty twenty-two to twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, on a year-to-year basis. So I think it was inferred that, um, I think it was actually a controller that suggested this was a new contract. This isn't not a new contract, this was negotiations of year two of the contract. I think it's also important to, um, remember our pricing, even in the prior bid, because it's that, it's already thirty percent lower than what was any of the other bids that were out there. We did not do any increases for subsequent years, we're not proposing any increases. So I know the issue came up with negotiations. And actually, we, when I say we net, we tailored it down as much as we can without jeopardizing or sacrificing the, the compliance for these projects. I heard one of the councilmen talk about taxpayer dollars. Well, when you have sixty million dollars on the street and you have a lot of new organizations who have never managed federal grant awards, you're, the, the risk that they will be non-compliant and potentially for fraud, waste, and abuse is a lot higher. It's very high. I was just in Las Vegas last week doing a fraud investigation for ARPA funds for an organization that misused a couple of million dollars in ARPA funds. It's a real problem. So our plan and what we proposed really protects the taxpayer dollars. It also protects the county and the county council. So we got it, so there was some time about the whole evaluation process. As I keep saying, we did not recommend this. I actually cautioned you all that you, if you've never done an evaluation of a grant, it's not that easy, that it's a detailed process. We gave new evaluation factors early. We asked for you to review them. We did them during training. We did all of that before the evaluation factors hit the street. So you all, we tried to simplify them enough, and then we asked you for your input. We, we, I did a whole presentation just on evaluation factors. Then we went through the rules of engagement and we talked about the confidentiality and the non-disclosure agreements which were signed. All of those things were done. When we put out the notice of funding applications, we did, we did training and informational sessions. We responded to over a hundred and six emails and calls just on the ARPA application process. And I know, and I'm not aware of, and I'm sure we would have heard it a lot of the council, we didn't have a lot of, we didn't have any applicants say, my application didn't get processed. Their application went through the system. We processed a hundred fifty-two applications within, I think it was like a sixty-day time period. We did, uh, risk assessments, we did budget allowances. Your files are a hundred percent compliant. Every piece of paper, every document that we had to collect during the application process, you are mandated to have in your government grant files, uh, um, subject to audit. You're mandated, so your files are complete. They have every document and every kind of evaluation you need to do. Well, as we were doing the evaluation process, and I just have to keep saying, I strongly recommended that it not be done by you all, because I was concerned, which is why we tried to do training. And we tried to meet with you all to kind of give you some guidance. We didn't do any of the evaluation scoring. You all did. And to that end, I understand that it didn't come, that the scores weren't what you expected them to be, or what, they didn't meet the thresholds that we added. But we didn't have any control over that. What I accept five, full responsibility for is those five files that for whatever reasons did not upload into your portals. And those five files, we took immediate action on. We got those evaluations. I understand that you all are saying, had those five files been in there, maybe you might not have adopted the Mitchell plan. I really, I really don't know, but I take full responsibility for that technological error. And that error, though, we immediately addressed and we immediately corrected and we reopened the pools. We've since, just during this, since you've made these awards, we've had over two hundred and twenty-six emails and, uh, and or calls. Your constituents, they're not calling you complaining about we're not responding, or they can't get in touch with you. With some of you, we've met hours going through the evaluation process to help you. As soon as we become aware, now, if we're not aware, it's not anything that we can do about that, but to the extent we are aware, we do. We put in policies and procedures, internal control plans with your administration for your request for reimbursements, internal controls, so understanding what type of documentation you have to file, have to have to approve these projects. We do weekly status meetings. We come to the council meetings. We do weekly tracking reports. We have multiple databases where we run tables and analysis as requested. We are, we're assisting with your treasury reporting. We just worked on revenue replacement and we just worked on the quarterly report that's due at the end of this month. In addition, we've already started the project summaries because in July you have to do a comprehensive report to the, under to the treasury on these activities. So while I understand that this is a, financially, this is, I don't negate, or in, in no way do I minimize what this means to the county taxpayers, but the risk of losing a lot more money is greater without those, um, in place. And I, I caution you, I caution you, having, that the OIG, and I'm not scaring you, I'm just cautioning you, whether it's with us or anybody, we have made sure, we protected you, even having conflicts of interest in place, other things. If somebody looks at our files, our files are complete and we did everything we could to protect the taxpayer dollars and to protect the county. So at this point, and I hear about how the evaluation process, that just blew up. Well, you, you, you made awards, you have award files, the money is on the street, you have your applicants, they're applying and we're going through the process. So I just ask that you please take that into consideration, all the things, which is what I tried to show out in the ten-page PowerPoint, all the things that we've got done during this period. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Booth. Uh, just really quick for council, there was a couple of things that we all were on the fence about. Uh, Ms. Long has pulled up the resolution. It was passed at the June twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two meeting, uh, effective six days after adoption. The last paragraph, uh, states that the use of American Plan Act SLRF funds to enter into a one-year contract with booth management consulting LLC for consulting services and administration of art funds not to exceed the amount of three hundred fifty thousand dollars. And then also, um, the, Mr. Robertson was the county manager. So those were just things that we were going back and forth on, I just wanted to clarify. Okay, so a bunch of you were about to say something before Ms. Booth spoke, so Mr. Lombardo and then Mr. Mitchell?
Yeah, so one of the things Ms. Booth said that I just want some clarification on, if we can have, is that, that, um, every document and every file that they have is complete. Um, I don't know exactly what that's referencing, but it, you know, one of the things that I know I've been having some difficulty with over the last few weeks, after we finished with our evaluation process, after we started announcing the awards and things like that, we had organizations that were contacting us, asking why were we not eligible for these, these monies? What did we do wrong? You know, I've read the act, I think we're eligible. And then, um, you know, we, we would find out that, okay, some of their documentation was not complete, but then they would go and they would contact booth management, and I'm not sure exactly how it would get resolved, but then it would get resolved and they would say, okay, now you are eligible. Um, I just would like some clarification on that. And, and, I mean, that's one of the things that I've been really having an issue with as of late.
There were only.
I think I've run some at least one time before.
Yeah, there were only two and, um, or two actual, um, applicants that were determined and eligible. But in those two applicants, we discussed, I know I discussed with you, part of it is how they complete the application, how they answer the questions. We can't, we can't, they're, the questions were designed to determine their eligibility. So if one person answered the question in such a way that they met, they demonstrated how they met the eligible category, that's all we can rely on. We can't write their project scopes. We can't tell them how to write their projects, how to make sure that they're in line. We get, remember, before we even did the applications, we did training on where they needed to look at. We went over all of the eligible activity categories. We went over the expenditure categories. We went over all of the eligible activity categories. We went over the expenditure categories. So you could have two of the same applicants who depending on how they wrote their application, which is the same as with two resumes, two proposals, but depending on how they wrote their application, didn't demonstrate that they met the eligibility category. And it was only two out of all the applications that were submitted. And the other one, we found out subsequently, they were in a qualified census tract. They did not indicate that, which was an option. They did not indicate that they were in a qualified census tract, um, during the time of their application. They actually came back because they had questions and we answered questions. We've never not answered a question or not responded. And, um, we actually helped them identify. You know, you're in a qualified census tract, right? And they said, no, we didn't know then, but, but that's not our responsibility. It's almost like we can't take preference because it could appear preferential. If you help one applicant or another, we just process based on the information they submitted. Does that make sense?
Uh, yeah, that is, that sort of answers my question. Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell?
And my real concern is if you put this up again. And I agree with a lot of people. We have a shared responsibility to the taxpayers, no matter what kind of monies they are. But the problem I'm having is the liability. This was spoke about just being in Las Vegas. If we go with another consultant. I, I put, put you wrong, but I just, I'm afraid that we end up paying more. As well, we can take up the liability for projects that they weren't involved in from the start. Big risk going to assume responsibility, liability for, you know, a hundred million dollars. They were involved in the approval process, the application process. So that's
That's a legitimate concern. I agree with you and I think an outfit, a company, corporation would know that.
We, we, we are required to maintain professional errors and omissions insurance, which we have to submit certificates for. So we do have that insurance.
Thank you. Mr. Scavitch?
So when I look for a few other companies who do this, they are required to carry that insurance. They couldn't get involved in this project taken on without that. They'd have to show that to us and
We, I did.
Well, we don't know because we never put this portion out, right? So we're looking to expend almost a million dollars without ever putting this out to bid.
I, my, my only other legitimate concern regarding that would be at one point, you know, can, can this new organization say something does go wrong? Can this new organization say, oh, well, this happened during the other organization's time and then, you know, booth management might say, oh, no, no, we didn't do that. Like it would be a huge back and forth and turn into a big, you know, rigmarole.
Well, she's already doing that in that proposal. If you read that, her, you know, overview. There's a couple of things she hits on and says counsel didn't follow this, counsel didn't follow that. To me, that's kind of, she's setting up an hour already. I don't know.
Yeah, that's, that's my, that's my biggest concern is that we had a process that was outlined and given to us. And then we strayed from it. So the liability piece does concern me. Mr. Irvin?
Speaking of, of due diligence and, and, you know, fraud, OIG, I mean, don't forget, the majority passed this, this non-nominant resolution. And, and some of us were looking at individual projects from a fraudulent perspective. And, and, you know, and quite honestly, I can't even get the information. I've been asked it for weeks. They're looking direct, booth is actually looking direction of your chair, uh, to get that information open up to all of us. You know, because we still don't have access to it. I mean, we paid for the data. I want to see all of it.
I responded to that.
Wait today?
No, like at the beginning of when you asked for it, I said, I said that the I said that the school, because there was an email sent back to me asking about scores being made public. And I said, no, or about like it, each other's scores being made public. And I said, no, that is not what we're looking for. We do not need each other's scores. We just need the applications. That's it. The, just the applications and the workbooks, not the, not the scores, not the scores. And I said that specifically.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm, I, I, the conversation I remember had seen in the emails, because I did ask Jerry specifically to you. I sent the email even today. I rewrote it and sent it that just to give direction because we can release it. Y'all have access tomorrow. I, I would say this evening, but my staff is not working right now. You'll have access tomorrow.
I mean, and that, you know, that thing of part of, of rewarding a contractor's responsiveness, you know, and, and to, to our needs and, and to do our diligence to try to prevent fraud. You know, I, I obviously would want you to go to bat for us if we can sort of attack it from a different perspective and there's different eyes looking at some of these things. I know it's not your job probably to look at the weeds of some of these applications, but some of us are looking in, into the weeds. And, and, you know, uh, looking at one of the projects, uh, for actually that, that's, uh, I think for Beach Haven, which doesn't really um, have businesses in there, but, uh, in, in their sort of organization. There's one that's incorporated in there that's, uh, I think the incorporation to that at, at Easton. So, you know, those are the things that I'm looking at and, but I, I need all the, all the pieces to be able to actually look at the facts and, and to state the fact and to be able to sort of, um,
April seventh, April seventh at seven twenty-six AM. You said, this is my third request. Mr. Thornton said, is there a reason why this isn't being released? And I responded to Ms. Booth, uh, Mr. Swets and I CC John Lombardo. And I said, I see council members request to open up ARPA application information. This does not mean there are scores, no score, score sheets are being requested. The application portion, just for clarification. Thank you, Kendra. It was the seventh at seven twenty-six AM. The day before my
And I, I'm, I totally misread that to say for clarification and I responded by email and saying, yes, I believe just the application is not the evaluation. I did respond to that, but I didn't. And then I think I sent you another one asking again, is it okay to release? It's the, y'all, each of you all will have your link tomorrow to go into the applications and do whatever you would like to them.
Thank you, Ms. Booth.
Ms. Booth, uh, just out of curiosity, would you take on a project of someone else that, that started it? So what we're asking possibly of another company. Just wondering how you would, uh, feel about taking on someone else's work that they started.
I mean, to be candid, we do it all the time, um, at different areas. Sometimes it might be uh, just, it, it's not uncommon. Um, some of the, the, the risk factors that you all are suggesting, like you are, you have no risk associated with deciding to change how you wanted to award. You have full, it, the, the federal government says as long as you all agree that you can award however you want to award. I think everybody's concerned because of what was in, you did another resolution. It'd be another thing if you didn't do it through your elementary procedures, but that happens every day. Um, they, you know, panels sit down and say, we're going to do X instead of Y. And as long as it's a panel decision that's documented, it, it happens every day. It's just not, you know, and I hear you with that risk, but I'm not gonna lie or misrepresent. It does happen that you take on a project and you do disclaim though. I mean, we will say, well, we're not responsible for that. That's what, that's what we do. We'll just say we're not responsible. So if anything in that area, it's based on, you know, that would be the other contractor's responsibility. We go with audits and certain kind of agreed upon engagements.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
You have, you read the resolution. When did the contract begin?
Um, it was June twenty-eighth and it was in act at six days after.
July, whatever. That's for four year.
One year. One year not to exceed three hundred fifty thousand.
So it's just, the information we give us now, is it May that the contract expires?
I have to, I could pull, we can try to pull the contract itself.
So which, yeah, but we didn't pass a resolution from the end of June.
I think the, the money, it has something to do with the, I think we're getting close to the three hundred fifty thousand dollar mark. I don't know.
But that's not the contract. There's a, there's a timeframe on the contract.
Right.
And that's all we should be adhering to and not be running into this because we think May is the date.
It's July third to July third.
Something like, yeah. Well, that's what the resolution was, June twenty-eight.
Yeah.
Want to hold if anybody asks, use the restroom. Now it's a good ten minutes. We'll, we'll pull it up.
Yeah, it's July eight. That was the date of the contract that we signed. We signed it.
So you're showing it to expire the end of
The, the county, yes, the acting county manager asked us to
I think Mr. Swets was telling us it's done in May. It's not the case.
I think we've reached the, I've reached
Or we're close to it or something.
No, the contract's not in the packet.
It would be on the webpage though for the manager's signature. And that must, must have been Mr. Robertson's.
It's Robertson, yeah. Got it. Effective, oh, we'll wait till everybody's back. Oh, well, now that everybody's gone, we need some recess. I pulled it up and everybody's gone. Guys, can we have a motion to recess? We're not gonna end the Zoom though, just for a short amount of time. All in favor?
Recording stopped.
Order up or something?
Yeah, ten minutes.
You saw this coming.
Yes.
All right, so the contract, this contract effective seven one, termination six thirty twenty-three. Ready for us? Start date. Turn your, turn your mic off. I've turned your mics on, start the recording.
Recording in progress.
Alright, do we have a motion to return from recess? All in favor?
Aye.
Poses, abstentions? Alright, we're back, yeah, we did. Yeah.
Cause I wasn't here.
I think it was Mr. McGinn, who made the first? Mr. McGinn, like, Mr. Thor.
That was not recess, right?
That was for recess.
I was not present.
Yeah. You were, and Mr. Leanne was walking out the door.
Brian.
Brian was here.
Oh, Brian was here, I'm sorry. Carl was here.
No, he was in the bathroom.
What I thought, yeah, I thought he walked away. They were like seven.
Uh, we'll, we'll wash that.
Sharon, I think I made a second too, but I think someone else made it, so we should be covered.
But Carl's being down somewhere.
Thanks, Tim.
We're glad you're here, Carl.
I was not.
And Leanne, everybody else was.
Yeah, I did. I have to say our controller has a very nice head of hair.
Well, if you showed up, you'd see his face.
To reconvene everybody who's here. Let's see. Talking about you. No, you weren't here when we reconvened from recess.
You passed through there.
Yes, so, see, you have to come back. Alright, cool. Do we have to roll call after recess?
No.
Alright, here we go. Sorry, sound of circus today. Alright, we did pull up. Pulled it up, and the contract. Effective date 7/1, termination date 6/30, but our controller pointed out that it actually, from the date of the manager's signature, so that was 7/13, July 13.
That's who said 7/8.
Well, I'm looking at it. It does say she signed it on 7/8, but we say that it's the manager's signature. July 13, 2022.
Well, we should, July 12th of this year.
Yep, last day.
Okay, well, either way, it's not till July.
Well, you said that, is it one year or exceeds the amount?
No, it says one year contract.
One year.
Not to exceed, it says one year not to exceed. Yeah, one year, not to exceed. Okay.
So, as a result, I'd like to make the motion with table this.
Roll call on table?
Mr. McGinnly?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell? Mr. Perry?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Joe Scavitch?
Yes. Yes.
Dermot?
Yes. Yes. You name this, missly tabled, number four, this should be easier, motion to introduce ordinance amending the 2023 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County DA, this is to open a budget, they received a gun violence prosecution grant, it's just to put the grant into budget. Roll call?
Okay, roll call, Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Scavitch?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Dermot? Yes. Mr. McGinnly?
Yes.
Mr. Rayo?
Yes. Next, we have motion to introduce ordinance adopting a parking ordinance in Hannah River Township.
It's a move below.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Scavitch?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. Dermot?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnly?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes. Number six, motion to adopt resolution approving the financing by Northeastern Pennsylvania Hospital Education Authority of certain projects for the benefit of King's College and not-for-profit corporation, declaring that it is desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of people of the county of Luzerne, Pennsylvania, and the area served by King's College to have the projects provided by and financed through the authority and authorizing other necessary and appropriate actions.
Motion, second.
Okay.
Mr. McGinnly was first.
Yeah, Mr. Urban was the second. Roll call?
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Scavitch?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. Dermot?
Yes.
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Attorney Moses, you're off the hook, take care. Number seven. Number seven, motion to approve letter to authorities receiving ARPA money regarding fees.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call?
Actually, make the motion to amend my name.
That's a typo.
Oh, I have actually a different signature page, because that letter's been very many authorities, so if we all sign a second page, it's just signatures. That would be much easier.
Can you just make the motion to remove that signature? All of a sudden.
Remove all the signatures?
Yeah, attach the signature page.
Okay, yeah, make motion to remove all the signatures.
Sorry, I didn't mean to ask. Okay. Alright, so we have a motion in a second to amend it, removing this signature page at the bottom and adding the official signature page.
My name better be spelled right.
Cool.
There's motion in a second, right?
First was Mr. Urban, second was Mr. Thornton. Can we have a roll call on just the amendment?
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Joe Scavitch?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. Dermot?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnly?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yeah.
Mr. Thornton?
Yeah.
Mr. Rayo?
Yes.
Not until it's.
You can leave it, okay, you can leave it, yeah. That'll be okay. That'll be okay for the time being, okay. Can we have a roll call on the ordinance with the amendment? Or not the ordinance, the letter, sorry.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Scavitch?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. Dermot?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnly?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell? Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Yes. Number eight, motion to adopt resolution authorized by the county manager to execute the sale of a parcel of county-owned property in the Luxbury City to Sally Tony.
Motion, second.
Second by Mr. Walsh. Roll call?
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Joe Scavitch?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell? Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Rayo?
Yes. Motion passes, public comment on non-agenda items. Ms. Hartman?
So, we have a third written account check. Um, children of these, I've been going back and forth with the director and asking if they were direct. My understanding, there are some contracts, we're sure, that are not signed yet, that they're waiting on. I'm just curious, will they be backdated to January 1st? Apparently, these people are working with no contracts, so I want to see when they're signed, when they're brought in. Backdating contractors, because it was audited by Michelle Bednar, the previous controller, and that was an issue that she brought up, but contracts will not be signed on late. Next, I know we're gonna talk on the next session, we'll be able to talk afterwards, but about the top three applicants, I just want to see if county council was able to see all the applicants, so that we know that the search committee did their due diligence, but that doesn't usually release to public, but I'm just curious, did you guys get a chance to see all of the applicants, so we know that that search committee did their due diligence on who they're bringing forward? You haven't seen anything?
No, we haven't gotten anything yet, we'll find out when you all find out.
Okay. Next, Lloyd Lauren, you're gonna talk about WELPAP. WELPAP, I spoke on that before in the past, we've already settled the three million lawsuit, I'm not sure if the lawsuit today. Litigation today, they talked about executive session effect with them, but they're looking to extend that contract, and they're starting to just start a suboxone program. It's a band-aid, it's my understanding, and I'm not very familiar, I'm taking working people in the, in the community, but if you're on methadone, you can't be given suboxone, so we're not addressing the whole issue, you give somebody a ton of methadone, the box will kill them. So that's something that they need to be careful of, and it's my understanding, it's being done in the day room at the prison, so I'm not sure, but just passing on what I'm being told. So I think that should be on hold until we have a real acting manager. And the last thing I have is the corner's clock system, when did we stop using that for employees? I know it's been brought up in a couple of past meetings, and I was told that we looked at to see counting, was that's what you clock in and clock out with? They're not using that anymore, they're doing like a pay for, an auto pay as well. So they're not having to clock in and clock out, so we don't know how long they're on breaks, how long they're here in the private sector that want to fly, and I don't think you fly in county government. WELPAP, would you do that? Ben, you call me now?
Thank you. Thank you.
Can't hear.
Lisa Fisher?
Thank you very much for the article that was in the paper today about addressing an article that you might draft to get in touch with.
I'm sorry, could you speak up, ma'am?
I wanted to thank everybody for getting in touch with, there's an article in the newspaper that you might address an article to Copart in Duryea on behalf of McAlpine Street residents for the 100 and 200 block, and the problem that we're having, I included some articles there that I was able to get indirectly from zoning through an attorney that's trying to help me with this matter. It points out a few things that were brought up at last meeting, and just a couple of problems that I had, what was brought up with zoning, and just a couple of things, the variance on page three of that, they were supposed to be back 30 feet from the property line, and they're building right up on the property line. Those I got through zoning, this is the plan, I'm sorry, I only have one copy, but that's all I was able to, yeah. Yeah, that passed along. They're building right up on the property line, there's an alley that's 12 feet, and their fence is right up on the alley, so I was wondering about that variance, that's supposed to be 30 feet backed up, but it's only 12 feet, actually. And I want to thank you very much for drafting an art, a letter to Copart and Duryea and trying to get a town meeting, and I appreciate everything that you are doing.
Thank you. Guys, just get the complete packet to Sharon, the whole thing, don't take anything out of it. She got one of those, she needs the map, yeah, because we'll have to post them on the website, sorry. Sorry, sorry.
We've already, yes, she just brought up.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher, also, sorry.
Thank you, and one of your neighbors, Mrs. Welkin, sent me a message today with a copy of the zoning application for that Copart lot, where, as she circled and ran, the setback is 30 feet from the rear yard property line, and she too stated they're built, they're built stuff right up to the property line, so she asked if someone from the county could look into that setback, alleged violation.
On the third page of those, here we have, of the packet.
Alright, she just asked if someone in the county would follow up on that.
Thank you. Dolores Boda?
Yes, my name is Dolores Boda, thank you for listening to me. I'm one of the residents on McAlpine Street. I spoke at the last meeting, and I got a little bit disturbed, because when I bought the home, which was two years ago, there was trees there. There was a beautiful, I mean, you could go out there and just sit and see the wildlife coming into your yard, and then one day, it just, they were pulling the trees out. And not only that, it's hard to breathe, because these things are going right up to your property, and the dust is terrible, I mean, it's, you can't open up your windows, I mean, that's forget it. And, I mean, that concerns me with my, you know, my condition, and my husband had a heart attack, and he's, you know, susceptible to dirt and everything that's coming in the, into the house. And I just was wondering that if they could do anything as good neighbors, I'm sure we would appreciate that very much. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Boda.
Thank you.
James Schweitzer?
Good evening, James Schweitzer, West Hazleton Borough Council President. On behalf of council and the residents of West Hazleton, we'd like to thank Luzerne Council for consideration on ARPA funding for our J.C. Drive project. We understand that this was in, something that was previously on a work session for council, and we're essentially questioning, will it be on the council's next agenda?
Is that the end of your public comment?
Yes.
I believe it was, so it was discussed during a work session, and we'll, we'll have to vote on it, yes, it should be on an upcoming agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Henry, is it Kreisel?
Kreisel, yeah, very good.
Great.
Thank you, I'm also with West Hazleton Borough Council, the vice president. We just wanted to come up and be in front of you, thank you for the opportunity to address it, congratulations on the wedding, I heard you mention it, that you just got married, very good. I had, I had an idea of how I wanted to approach you all, but after tonight's meeting, let me start by saying I understand that you guys have a thankless job, and And on a smaller scale, I can sympathize with you guys because I'm in the same boat. And I thank you very much for the service that you guys provide. Also, with West Hazelton in regards to our storm water project and J.C. Drive, we're a very small community. We're one of the lowest income communities in the county. Less than 5,000 people. We appreciate the consideration and I just wanted to be put in front of you and ask that you consider us because the money would go and be very well spent. And we're a community that does a whole lot with very little. So it would benefit us greatly if you please consider us to continue that project and help us get through it. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Oh, anybody here? I have hands up on the Zoom, but if anybody here would like to speak. Oh, Mr. Griffin.
Well, under non-agenda items, I have a couple of items that I wanted to address with council. First of all, very shortly, we'll be getting a new manager. Council's going to vote on a new person. I'm happy to see that we did table that booth decision. That's a lot of money, $900,000. I certainly hope that we consider the fact that you're going to have a new manager in here and he'll be able to weigh in on whether he thinks that's a worthwhile expenditure or he prefers it to be bid. I think that's something that the manager probably should weigh in on with that size of a dollar amount. The same with Well Path. Well Path was, has not been a very good vendor to, to the county from a lot of issues that we've seen through the years of lawsuits. So I think we should bid that contract and see if anybody else is interested in, in doing that for the jail or for the prison. I think that would be important. If we don't get any bidders, that's fine. Then we could always go back and use Well Path if we need to, but I think we need to look for another vendor that could possibly do it and get fresh eyes over there to fix that, some of the problems we've been having there. The other issue that I know Ms. Hartman addressed is the issue about the applicants for the county manager. I certainly have utmost faith, faith in the search committee. I think they did a fabulous job in such a short period of time. They were put under extreme pressure to get this done in a hurry. All the more reason why council needs to see all the applicants. Redacted is the charter, so desires to make sure that you don't identify anybody. But clearly did see that their KSAs have put them in the ranking that the search committee has put them in and trust that the search committee did the job they were supposed to do and then you guys to feel comfortable on your choices. But I certainly think council should see all the applicants. You guys are the hiring body for that person and you should see all the applicants. Redacted so you don't know who they are. That's how it works for my department when I want to hire somebody. They send the applicants up without names or identifying characters. And they grade them and I pick the ones. And then when I pick the ones, then I get to see who they are to interview them. So it should be the same process for council. There was another shooting in Sherman Hills I saw over the last couple, two days. I think maybe council should look at that 2021 dash 24 ordinance, a resolution that we gave the, the Sherman Hills project a pilot program. And just take a look at that agreement and see if there's anything the council could do to try and force them to get that project going. There's been some serious issues over Sherman Hills. So, you know, Kronos on the auto pay, just briefly, I want to explain what auto pay means. Basically, what it does is it puts the hours in for every employee. Then when you punch in, they'll over punch the number. So if you're scheduled for 8:30 to four, it'll punch you in at eight. If you punch in at 8:25, it overrides the 8:30. But if you don't punch in, you get 8:30. So that's where the auto pay becomes a problem for employees. If they forget to punch in, they're getting paid whether they're there or not. It's really not a very accountable system. And that was put in through Corona, or through COVID. So that it's a, it's something that probably needs to be addressed by the manager. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other members in the public? Mr. Fitzgerald?
The, real, real quick in the booth there, I'm glad you guys tabled it. Boy, like I told a couple of you, it looked like she ran the bus back over you guys and threw a lot of blame on you guys. I feel sorry for you guys. But no matter what she says, you guys keep the faith, do your due diligence, do what's best for the county and put that bit out there. Other things is a couple of things I've heard. I heard that we had a, a vendor for milk that, that we used to substitute, that, that, that we bought milk from that was in the county and now it's going somewhere in Monroe County. I'd like to, you know, hear more about that. Another thing is, is that I'm really about is safety in this county. And our county is getting very, very unsafe. And basically, I think we need to address recruitment issues. That's like I thought with the election bureau. We need to start recruiting and putting money out there, not just just on our website, but we need to proactively recruit, go to colleges. This is the same with the election bureau for the sheriff's department. They're understaffed, underpaid. And I know I'm a fiscal conservative, so we have to, I don't want to raise taxes. So we can, we can find money somewhere else, hopefully, or generate another income. The prison, we're understaffed at the prison. And, you know, guards, you know, they have the highest rate of suicide in America. So we got to help them. Okay? The DA's office, there, I think they're short six. So we need to proactively recruit so we have a safer society and a better, you know, and, and better stuff. So whatever we could do to support them, if you guys could reach out and see human resources, what they're doing. Because again, we can't get a staff if we don't recruit a staff and they need some help. Again, I, you know, I'm really glad you guys tabled that. And as far as the new manager, you know, I hope that like Walter said, that you guys are transparent. I hope they're transparent with you. You know, I keep on preaching transparency. I think, you know, we're, we're not little kids. We can, we could see stuff. And I think we have a right to since we pay the taxes. So hopefully, we figure out, at least you guys could see who applied. And make sure we have the best qualified person. You've heard me with the election bureau where I don't think we have the best qualified and you saw what happened at the election. So hopefully, they did do their due diligence. Hopefully, we get the best three and I hope you elect the best one. Because if we don't, the citizens are going to pay for years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Since you brought up the issue about the note contract, I would like to just enlighten everybody here regarding it. I know Mr. Lewis Gavage is deeply involved with the issue too. Here's what happened. We all, we put the food service contract out for bid for the prison. And we all voted and, and we voted to hire Trinity Food Group, which are based out of Florida. They came in with the, the best friends. It wasn't long after that, that the local representative of Trinity, who I understand goes over to the prison and kind of runs the show with the food and milk, got rid of our milk provider. Now, our, our, our milk provider is a local business in Looserton County called Blue Ribbon Dairy. It's been around for probably 75, 80 years. It's a local, small business. And they, they've been there at the prison for over 20 years, I heard, and they've done a wonderful job now. I speak, I've spoken to the owner of the business. I've spoken to the, one of the main principals at Trinity down in Florida. Actually, I corresponded with an email. Mr. Lewis Gavage has corresponded with a couple of people from Trinity. It's unfortunate because Blue Ribbon Dairy, being a family-owned business, you know, they, they have their truck drivers, their employees at their dairy. The ice cream parlor, they have an old-fashioned ice cream parlor. They employ a bunch of people. All of these employees now, this is, this is a substantial part of their income and their business, the, the milk contract at the prison. Now, all of these employees, they pay taxes to Looserton County. They live in Looserton County. They pay property taxes here. The owners of the business itself, they pay tens of thousands of dollars in taxes every year to the county. And it's unfortunate because we as council need to be mindful of our, our local businesses in Looserton County that help and support employees locally. This was a substantial bite out of their business. And so far, I have not been able to ascertain good reasons why this happened, other than, as Mr. Fitzgerald stated, they decided to hire a milk provider out of Monroe County. I don't know what that's all about. I understand the pricing was about the same or the same. And there was three, two or three frivolous reasons given by the representative of Trinity, the local rep, as to why they just cut Blue Ribbon Dairy out of the mix. I think it's an issue that we all need to be concerned about. We should all dive into that and, and, you know, and help out the small business. Thank you.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, in all fairness, they were reinstated. They were reinstated yesterday, so.
Well, thank you for that. I appreciate it. For the representatives of the Trinity Food Group, I feel one of the company, thank you very much. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And if you haven't tried Blue Ribbon, try it out. Go ice cream.
All right. Just so people know, there's a melt board that's there. The melt board sets the milk price. So Blue Ribbon or Monroe County person, they all have the same pricing. So there's no advantage.
To moving somewhere else.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So it should definitely, Mr. Thornton, Mr. Gavage, I agree on the perspective.
Yes, stay in Looserton County if we can, for sure.
Thank you, Trinity.
I agree. Thank you, guys, who worked on that. Anybody else here in person who would like to speak?
Jamie Walsh from Ross Township. I was just wondering if any of our council members have heard of an organization or a company called Cuth mental health services? You have?
No.
Anybody else? I want, I want to make you aware because I know that, that you all talk to school board members as well. And I need, I need to bring some awareness to what's going on with this organization. The state of Pennsylvania had a $3 million grant to bring Cuth mental health to Pennsylvania, to, to the United States. They're based out of the United Kingdom. Originally, they were called the Zen Zone, which I, I could talk for an hour on this. But I'm just trying to make some, bring some awareness to what this organization is and does. After extensive research by our citizens advisory, we found that it's, it's a mental health website. And currently, it's in Wyoming area. It's in Myers. Well, sorry, I'm an old Myers guy. Wolksberry. It's up, it's in Pittston. And actually, the company was invited out to Berwick to do a public meeting because they had parents that had a lot of questions and they no-showed. So they got a $3 million grant. And what it's, it's sold as is free mental health services that kids can go on a website and talk to people about their mental health problems. Well, in the state of Pennsylvania, Senate Bill 856 states that at age 14 in Pennsylvania, if a child seeks mental health in this state, the school district does not have to communicate that to the parents. Okay? So that's scary to begin with. But what makes it further scary, the, these kids aren't seeking mental health. They're being sold mental health treatment. And it's, and it's dangerous. From 2014 to 2018, the statistics in the United Kingdom showed a 61% increase in suicidal tendencies for people and children that use this application. So I'm, I'm making you aware of it because you all have kids and grandkids. And I really think we could use some help getting the word out about Cuth mental health. Of all places, they put their headquarters, their, their United States headquarters in Forty Ford, Pennsylvania. And the mayor of Forty Ford is the director of the company. So I'm, I'm bringing this to awareness because I've, we've been looking into this for about six, seven months now. And it's just a very dangerous program for, to be put, oh, and Valley West has it. Wyoming area, Pittston area, and that, and Wolksberry area, and the Votex both have it. So I just wanted you to be aware of it and please ask your school board members what they know. And if they need more help or information, we'd be more than happy to sit down and talk. Thanks.
Thank you.
K O O T. Their original organization was called Zen Zone, X E N Z O N E.
Thank you. Any member, any other members of the public that are here? If not, we have two hands up on the Zoom. Mr. Raible?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mark Raible from Hazleton speaking. First of all, I would like to thank the council for tabling the motion on ARP. You know, for the management. I think that was a good call. And also the West Hazleton Borough Council members, as far as J.C. Drive, as I said at the last meeting, where the work session, that was a, a problem with a, I believe it was a former company that made soap. And there was an overflow after a storm and it mixed into the Black Creek and caused a lot of suds that had to be cleaned up. So that needs to be done. And I think that, I think they, they're working in concert with the Greater Hazleton Joint Store Authority on that project. So if council would look into that, I think that, that it would help them tremendously. First of all, Madam Chair, I don't think you were here because you were, you, you had your marriage to attend to. So last week, there was an election board meeting. And I couldn't get this, this, this problem out of my, my, my mind with regards to uniformity of treatment of board members. Because you have an individual who happens to be chair of the election board who not once, not twice, not three times, but four times consecutively imposed herself on the solicitor, Ms. Raddick, for giving a legal opinion for something she clearly stated she could not give a legal opinion for. Now, I admire and respect Solicitor Raddick for her professionalism and her, her conduct in, on, from being almost accosted, I would say, by Ms. Williams for giving a legal opinion for something she could not give a legal opinion of because, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Skiing, but I do believe solicitors, not only in the office of law, but across this county, are subject to the rules of professional conduct. So Solicitor Raddick is not going to compromise herself for, to get, to be accosted or to give a legal opinion based on a political fanaticism, for lack of a better word, from a chair who would not take no for an answer. And she said it was a matter of law. No, it was a matter of her opinion because the solicitor of Dallas Township, it was in the paper, Mr. Mosca, said that the drop boxes are optional, not mandatory. So she couldn't take no for an answer, and I believe her conduct needs to be called into question, Madam Chair. I urge you to look into the, into the video and audio of, of the exchange. Thank you very much.
Thanks for bringing your attention, Mr. Raible. Next, it's, they have their hand up. It just says a very concerned resident, but you'll have to give your name and the municipality you reside in, please.
My name is Joseph McKay from Laughlin, Pennsylvania. I got four bullet items I'd like to talk about, the booth contract. If it doesn't state the terms and conditions to extend the contract, then it should go out to contracting for, for bidding process. Second item, the DA budget. I know that, that was grant money that was added to Sam's budget. But I mean, if he's short-staffed and he can't carry out investigations like election integrity investigations. I know the election board mentioned, I think Alyssa Fasaro mentioned that there's an investigation from November 2021 that's still open. I mean, that, that was a year and a half ago and there's, there's still no closure on that investigation. So maybe additional resources need to be provided to Sam. My third item, Rock in the River, that's been heavily advertised today through the media and social media. How much does the county actually pay for those three concerts and the free busing to, you know, the, the county area, the county seat? Because if, if there was a proposed raise of 6.75 and ended up being 2.99, and we're having free concerts, but that taxpayers are paying for it. I mean, that, that's just bad optics right there. My fourth item, it was discussed in the election board meeting that the election My fourth item, it was discussed in the election board meeting that the election bureau has an agreement on file that they could bypass the bidding process. They don't have to adhere to the $25,000 threshold. So, let's, let's just award money freely and let's not have competitive, competitive bidding process. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Mr. McCabe. Any other members of the public?
Just one thing I'm going to bring out, just, you know, just remembered that I wanted to speak about. I'm not going to do it by email tonight because I think this is very important. I'd like the solicitor actually to look into this as well. There is a county employee who's a candidate for magistrate using the canine dog as a prop. And under the ACE Code, no county property should be used in political, for political purposes. We all know that there is a billboard with the, with the county canine on a campaign ad. So, I think we need to look into that. It is against the ACE Code. Clearly, in one of the provisions, that no county property shall be used. I think we pay for the upkeep or, you know, the vet bill, probably the canine. So, I think we need to really look at that, have the manager, talk manager, or get the DA to discipline that individual. I'll tell you.
Yeah, we don't have to say it on the record, but it's. It's a cute dog. The dog's funny.
We should like the dog.
Okay. Any other members of the public I wish to speak? No, hearing none, we have a motion adjourned. All favor? No extensions? Opposed? Okay, the voting session adjourned at 8:24. We'll pick up at 8:30.
Recording stopped.
Where's Mr. Erbman? Charlie, you on?
I am here.
Cool, cool. All right. 8:33, we're going to call the work session to order.
Recording in progress.
We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Venus.
Here.
Mr. Los Gavin.
Here.
Mr. Lombardo.
Here.
Mr. Dermott. Here. Mr. McKinley.
Present.
Mr. Mitchell. Harry.
Here.
Mr. Thornton.
Here.
Mr. Erbman.
Here.
Any additions or deletions?
I'd like to make one recommendation.
Yeah, okay, I have one too, which it might be the same. I was going to move eight to one and seven to two.
Well, definitely eight to one. Here, get that over to seven, I would leave at the end. Okay, my recommendation is move eight up to five.
Okay. We'll move eight. Are you guys okay if I also move seven? Okay, we're going to move eight to one, seven to two. All favor? Extensions? Opposed? Agenda is adopted. So, up first, discussion regarding resolution committing a local match for state operating assistance to Luzerne County Transportation Authority. Just like to remind all of our presenters tonight that it is in fact 8:35. And my window to inspire us to get out of here with sunlight, it's now dark out. So, take the time you need, but let's not go over that.
As quickly as possible. Thank you and good evening, everybody. And I'm here on behalf of LCTA for the local match. This is a yearly request, this, the local match. So, what we do is we get operating money from PennDOT, every trans agency in the state does. As part of Act 89 requires a mat, local match for, for the operating money. So, we received roughly $8.1 million. That's what we've been getting for the next fiscal year. So, that local match requirement is $790,575. That's approximately 10% of what we're receiving. The law states that in, at one point, every transit agency in Pennsylvania will be at 15%. So, it nudges up a little bit every year. So, we're at 10%. So, we're requesting that. That's a yearly request. Also, for capital money, this is a request for two years, requesting $65,000 in, in local match. And this would be for, towards buses, et cetera, anything capital that we're going to need over the next two years. So, I won't be back next year asking for capital money for a two-year. I just want to mention one other thing. Everyone's invited, may have gotten emails. We're conducting a transit development plan with the help of PennDOT. We have some good planners working with us. What that is, I said that, I believe I mentioned last year, the routes on our county have not been really looked at or worked on any major changes in years. This is going to look at every route, our service throughout the county. And we're going to put service where it needs to be. We're going to move service around where it might not need to be. But we're going to become more efficient, get better service out there through your process. But council is welcome to interact with LCTA and make recommendations through this product process. So, that's what you're, you're all invited to take part in that. And you will be contacted. Obviously, we have some, we've got some emails on that. But this is good. I mean, microtransit, which is a new thing, will be probably introduced into areas. And so, I encourage you to participate because we're going to make the system better. This is going to be a good step in the right direction. Any questions for me? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much. That was way faster than I expected. All right. We moved the county manager search committee presentation regarding the county search and selections to number two. So, I believe Mr. Shandra is here. Oh, and he comes bearing gifts.
These are very valuable envelopes here.
Valuable?
Yeah.
PowerPoint. I am going to go through the PowerPoint as quick as I can. God bless you, guys. I can see.
Want us to hand those out to the public or someone?
You can. You can.
Ms. Hartman's on it.
And there's copy, there was a copy of it on the website as well.
Yes.
You know you're paying me for this, right?
Thank you. So, well, first of all, thank you so much. I think the, I think county council did an exceptional job on selection of the three committee members. I think, you know, it was a great, you know, different frame of references. David Fusco, who runs Mechanical Services, an entrepreneur runs his business, who's on, who's currently with us on Zoom. And Danielle Ader, who, who's Ada? I'm sorry, I could continue to mispronounce it. It's probably the late hours, so I apologize for that.
It's only like three months ago.
Yeah, so, and, and Danielle works for AJ Consulting, which, which consults for C-level banking offices. Kept us, you know, on target as far as everything we should be doing correctly in reference to, to an executive recruiter. And then myself, you know, I just, I have a business background. I also had the pleasure of, and some familiarity, working with county council as a member of Luzerne County Transportation Authority. Thank you for everything that you have done for us. But welcome to the presentation. The purpose of the presentation is to keep the public and council aware of everything that we have done. I thought we, I thought we did a pretty good job. I know I sent out a, except, a number of emails keeping county council up to speed. And my hat's off to, to, to the media. I think they did a great job because every other day they had an article in there about the county search. We did everything we, we could to, to make sure that we hit the target. The deadline was March 31st. And today, I'm going to be able to hand you a packet of our recommendations. So, we're a couple of weeks, we're a couple of weeks late. The, the job posting that we did was done. And it contained all the necessary requirements that we were looking for in the proper leader for, for their, the county of Luzerne. And the application time, I believe, we had about two, two and a half weeks for applicants to send their application in. It was posted internally, it was posted on the website with the help of Danielle. We also hit all of the governmental sites, the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania, the Neo Government, and ICMA, all of those. And I still receiving emails, not from applicants, but different things that they do and, and aspects of being part of that, being part of their organization. We received 17 applications. Key criteria when we screened them was government municipal experience, their education, their senior. their senior level experience, their turnaround experience and successes, and their tenure at previous, uh, positions. We narrowed, we didn't, took the seventeen applications and narrowed them down to six top candidates that we wanted to interview. And with those, uh, top candidates, we, we took the six candidates and we sent out, um, five questions that we wanted answers back, and they were, what attracted you to the role? Please detail, detail what your background and experience, uh, does to prepare you for, for the role, et cetera. And they were basically questions to analyze someone's ability to understand the concept, think it through, outline it, uh, and then communicate it back to us, uh, in, in written form. You'll see on the next several pages were, were, uh, questions that we used either exactly portions of those questions. For example, uh, what's the thirty, what's the first thirty, sixty, ninety days going to look like? What's your leadership style or communication style look like? Sense of urgency, self-control questions, creativity, conflict management, God bless you. Organization ability, problem solving, results, ability, you know, what type of teamwork and team, team building, their ability, uh, uh, to influence. And, um, and all of those questions gave us, gave us an insight into, you know, once you get an application, it's one thing. There's an old saying, you don't call them cowboys till you seen them ride. So we were able, basically, in, 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 in listening, in listening to them, you know, their ability, number one. Uh, it was evident when we met with the division heads that, um, there's a morale problem in the county. There's lack, there's not enough, you know, we don't have, we don't have sufficient enough staff. How would you go about doing that? How do you create map morale? How do you create, uh, 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 teamwork? What's your ability when, uh, when you have a concept? And that concept, everyone's against you on that concept. How do you go about, how do you go about changing people's mind? What collaboration do you use within your team to make that final decision? And then finally, do they, you know, do they have the leadership ability and skills to be able to deal with you guys, deal with, with county council? Do they have the intestinal fortitude to stand up? And when, 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 when they want to do something, to be able to establish the criteria and the facts? Just some of the things that we heard here tonight. This meeting could have been a, a whole lot sooner with, with the proper leadership and the proper administration with the facts and, and a lot of the issues completed. We then took and did, um, scoring of ten items. And the scoring was, um, five being the highest is to zero. If you take a look at them, professional, professional skills and experience, municipal government experience, regional versus out-of-town experience, quality of answers to the questions, experience in recruitment training, communication skills, relationship with local, state and federal government, understanding of finance and budget, strategic awareness and planning, and lastly, team development. Each of the candidates were scored, um, had a score sheet. If you go to the next, the next sheet, we then took the six and narrowed down the six candidates to the top three. And, uh, with me tonight, I'm going to give you, um, our recommendation on the, on the top three candidates. You'll also see, you'll see the full six candidates. You won't have, you won't have all of the information as the other three, but you'll see how, how they scored. In the packet that you will receive while we're on the subject is, there's a narrative that I wrote explaining, um, why we selected the candidate, the top candidate that we did, and I will tell you that all three candidates were unanimous in that selection.
All three candidates or?
All three committee members. Thank you. Mr. McGinley, all three committee members were unanimous in that, in, in that, uh, in that decision. Um, as a, as a committee, we had political bl- blinders on. We knew, we did not know, nor care, nor it wasn't legal for us to ask anybody's affiliate, uh, 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 political affiliation, nor did we know each other's political affiliation, which I thought was important. Um, tomorrow, um, you're going to, you're going to receive via email a disc profile. And this profile is not to be, we don't use it for selection purposes. It's used more for developmental, developmental area, measures four different quadrants of a, of a person's personality. It'll give you guys the ability, when you sit down and interview these people, uh, where you, where you'll see their strengths, where you'll see, I don't like to use the word weakness, where you'll see their, their developmental areas, or more importantly, where the, the team, um, the, the team needs to be, needs, needs the strength to, to be able to support that, to support that leadership. Lastly, we're referring to the top three candidates. There will be, uh, again, an email sent with this profile, and we did background check, background checks on the, on the top three candidates. Those will be mailed to you first thing tomorrow morning. Um, I, I know you've heard me and, so I blew in the face that I thought that these, uh, uh, interviews and this discussion of these individuals should be done in, uh, executive session. Uh, all of our interviewing, uh, was the, actually, it was not here, even done here in the courthouse. We did it at the Pitzner Chamber of Commerce to keep, uh, to, uh, keep all of that as confidential as we possibly can. I will, I do have, um, the other three finalists, and I have copies of the other resumes, uh, if you need. Or if you'd like, if you would, uh, like to, to look at. I don't, I don't see where it serves the individual or the county any reason to bring these individuals into a public setting to interview them for a number of reasons. I mean, some of these, some of these, will it jeopardize their, could potentially jeopardize their employment? More importantly, if they are internal candidates, I am not sure, you know, uh, I'm not sure that I would feel as comfortable if I were not able to earn a right to that particular position. One thing we did do is we took all six candidates and, and, uh, as we interviewed them, we did request from them that if they had an issue being interviewed in public, then they should let us know then. Not any one of the candidates have that, have that issue. So if there's no other questions, I'm gonna pass out the envelopes. But I'm, we're open to questions if, if there are.
Thank you, Mr. Shandra, and thank you to the entire committee for all the work that you've done. Um, I don't think I'm speaking for myself. I think I could speak on behalf of all of you. We really appreciate the time and commitment that the three of you put into these, uh, meetings and interviews. Um, also, I believe, uh, we are going to move forward with public interviews, but I would like to schedule an executive session with the committee. Ahead of that, um, I had council send me their availability. I had council send me their availability for the first week of May, but I'm wondering if council would be opposed to having a Zoom executive session later this executive session. It could be via Zoom, but this week. Because if anybody has a conflict, you don't have to tell me now, but please email it to me between tonight or tomorrow morning if we schedule an executive session, uh, with the search committee, all three members, or if you guys want to send Mr. Shandra as a representative, whatever you guys decide to do, um, I'd like to schedule one this week.
When you're gonna schedule?
It would be Thursday or Friday if you zoom, probably, uh, I mean.
I would choose Thursday for good.
Okay, that's fine. But I'm just saying, if anybody has a conflict, then we'll, we'll move it, but looking at, okay. You guys don't want to meet on Friday? Okay. All right.
How long do you think that's a meeting lasts?
Well, you know our colleagues, so it does, I can't estimate it.
Like, what's the point of it, just to try to make an idea?
Well, I just feel like, um, after everybody reads these, you, you might have questions for the search committee. I just want to allow that, and then also we have the questions that we used in the past. Um, I'd like to give those to the search committee and see if there's anything that they'd like to add or what, what they think about those. If council's okay with that, and I know Mr. Shandra did request an executive session either way, so.
So the executive session will be over council.
Council and the search committee. And attorney's seat, because we just turned him along.
He's on.
Oh. Would anybody be opposed to lunch and cap? Okay. Okay, guys, just like I said, check your schedules, and if you can't do a certain time, please just email it to myself and please pop me, Sharon. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so, so the, the other, the other thing that I do owe you is tomorrow in your email, you'll see that this this profiles on the three individuals and the background checks.
Okay, great.
And thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Shandra, are you okay with an executive session, which is council and?
Oh, sure.
Thank you so much. All right, we will move on to the old number one, which is down number three, receive and discuss budget reports.
Good evening, council. Um, I'm gonna go line by line throughout the whole budget performance review. Uh, no, I'm gonna keep it quick to just get this over with. Um, the budget reports are in your packets. They're as of March thirty-first. The only highlight I wanted to turn your attention was, um, through March, so far, we collected roughly twenty-two million five hundred eighty thousand dollars worth in taxes for current year. Uh, last year through March, we collected fourteen million. I do know that the tax bills went out a little bit later last year, but just for reference. Uh, if anybody has any questions, you let me know or feel free to email me.
Thank you so much. Any questions? Budget and finance always just gets to the point. We appreciate it. Next, we have discussion regarding change of policies and procedures for planning and zoning certified letters. Uh, Mr. Matt Jones, I requested to speak to this. Did you wanna? Briefly, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Matt Jones, Planning and Zoning Director. Um, uh, you have the draft policy change in front of you. We'll talk about the draft letter to co-part later this evening, but, um, an audience member did ask this evening about whether there was a thirty-foot setback.
You can go right into co-part.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can.
So, so, um, there is a rear yard setback in light industrial zones. I'm answering the question from the audience member, if that's okay.
Yeah.
So, um, there is a thirty-yard, a thirty-foot yard setback, rear yard setback in the light industrial zone where the co-part property is located. That is for buildings, not for stormwater basins or parking areas. And it would apply to the back end of the co-part property, not the front end that fronts McAlpine Street. The co-part office trailer does meet all yard setback requirements, including the thirty-foot rear yard setback requirement and the twenty-five-foot front yard setback requirement. So their office trailer is more than twenty-five feet from McAlpine Street. Um, I wanted to just talk a little bit about the, uh, proposed policy change regarding sending certified letters instead of regular mail notices to neighbors regarding zoning hearings being held about projects in their neighborhood, uh, proposals in their neighborhood. Now, I'll be the first to tell you that I understand the benefit of receiving back a green slip of a certified mailer as proof that notification was sent to the neighbor of a pending zoning case. But that's if they're signed for and returned. Department staff will do what the administration and council decides we shall do. Um, but I wanted before your vote to tell you a little bit about the pros and cons that we've thought through at staff level after studying the item in a little bit more detail in the last two weeks. The policy going from certified mailers to regular mail occurred in twenty fifteen when Jim Ferry was the department director. The idea of sending certified mailers rather than regular mail was seen as somewhat more expensive, duplicative, and an extra work burden for staff, not viewed as worth the effort. And let me explain a little bit why. Uh, certified mailers may not be received when the mailman attempts to deliver them, if the attempt occurs at all. In other words, eight of the twenty communities that are served by the county zoning office are in rural areas, mostly bounded by Harvey's Lake, Macon Aqua, New Columbus, and Ricketts Glen. So if you think of the northwest quadrant of Luzerne County, that's where most of the communities are that we serve for zoning. The remainder are the up-county boroughs like Avoca, Dupont, Durie. Certified mailers, out, like, out in the countryside, the mailman has to disembark from their vehicle, walk to the front door. And folks may not be at home to receive the mail. They may be at work, or they may refuse to answer the door. The mailman is supposed to make three attempts before they return the item to sender as personally not accepted by the recipient.
Mr. Jones, if you don't mind, I'm gonna interject. This is, this letter that's attached is a directive from the county manager instructing planning and zoning to send certified letters. So what, the discussion is on here because I'm clarifying, because you don't want to do that?
So, I wanted to give you the pros and cons of the idea.
Right, but, uh, the county manager decides, like, we don't get involved in day-to-day operations, so how are we, how is this related?
We do set policy.
Right.
That would be a policy.
Okay.
I think that the county manager has drafted this with the idea that you were to discuss it at Mr. McGinley's suggestion. And you would decide whether or not to order the manager to do this, or sort of set policy, so to speak. It is my understanding of how this came to be based on two weeks ago's discussion.
Right.
Unless I'm mistaken.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, we're just looking for five.
So just wrapping this up, you know, um, since the policy changed in twenty fifteen, in all fairness, we, we've not received in that office one complaint of a regular mail notice not having been received prior to two weeks ago's council discussion on the co-part issue. The department processes approximately forty cases a year. And we've done that for the past eight years without receiving a complaint. Uh, tax bills are sent to the taxpayer by regular mail. And it begs the question, you know, do recipients not receive their tax bills in regular mail? When our department does send notices of zoning violation, that is when there's a property that is in violation of the zoning ordinance. It is still our policy in those rarer cases to send that notice by both regular and certified mail. Um, we're trying to get their attention. There have been several occasions, though, in the past few years where the certified mailer is returned to our office, but not the regular mail. This might indicate that the recipient refused to answer the door three times when the mailman visited, or they were simply not home. Their address received the regular mail presumably. Our experience has been in those cases that the regular mail, mail appears to get through better than the certified mail, because we ultimately hear back from those violators. And I would just point out that when the first Copart hearing occurred back in 2008, we did receive almost every green certified mailer slip back from the residents of McAlpine Street as signed, as received by them. And that collection of slips is viewable in our office files. Let me just speak really quickly about the added costs of certified mail, and then I will sit down. So a certified mailer costs eight dollars to send, a single mailer, eight dollars. Our department data shows that we have processed between thirty and fifty zoning hearing board cases per year, or roughly forty cases average per year. Last year, 2022, was an average year, we heard thirty-nine zoning hearing board cases. For those thirty-nine cases, four hundred and seventy-eight neighborly notices were sent to properties within a hundred feet of the subject site. If those letters had been sent certified instead of regular mail, the cost would have been just under four thousand dollars. This would raise the expenses borne by the postage expense line in the county general fund by four thousand dollars a year. Every year hereafter. This expense would be eaten by the taxpayers unless some other revenue was raised. To balance it, the planning and zoning department could theoretically raise the fees on the related board applications as a way to shore up that funding gap, if that were desirable. To make up four thousand dollars a year among roughly forty zoning cases per year, we would need to increase our fees by a hundred dollars a pop. In some cases, the, which, in most cases, the case for the most average citizen, this would represent a fifty percent increase in fees. So, for example, a zoning hearing related to residential development currently costs two hundred dollars. If we add a hundred dollars on top of that, that's a three hundred dollar application to go in front of the zoning hearing board. Admittedly, a zoning request that's of a commercial or industrial nature, that application costs seven hundred dollars is our current fee. That would jump to eight hundred dollars. But for, by and large, most of the cases that are residential related, you would have a fee go from two hundred to three hundred, if we wanted to try to shore up that revenue gap in the future. So I just wanted to explain some of the pros and cons. I really have no opinion about this, I'm on the fence about it, there would be benefits and drawbacks, but I wanted to paint the picture for you all before you decide on what the policy might be. And I can answer any questions, otherwise I'll sit down.
Sure, I'll go Mr. Thornton first.
Joe, clearly, I want to applaud your two-week-long presentation, get all the points. But clearly, for your presentation tonight, you're not in favor of, even though you said you're not. But let me finish before you answer. You gave all the reasons not to do it, I didn't hear many reasons why we should do it. Now, one great reason to do certified mail is to prevent exactly what's going on with that neighborhood down there in Dupont. I know our county office said someone signed an affidavit swearing that they sent those, what, twenty-five letters out to those residents? And that not one resident came forward to object. But yet we have all of them here at our public meetings, people that probably never went to a public meeting, extremely upset, in tears crying. It is not believable, I don't believe it, that we sent those letters out, regular mail. Maybe regular mail is the way to go, but we didn't send them out. There's no way you send letters to twenty-five people, not one of them cares about it, and then they all show up crying tears when the thing happens that the letter told them was going to happen.
Well, you said we have the certified slips, right?
There were two hearings, there was one in 2008. We sent those certified.
Okay.
We got all those slips back. And then there was a 2020 hearing to expand their operation, which we sent in regular mail. And they're claiming they didn't receive them.
All of them claiming it. There was one person down there claiming they didn't receive them.
There are, I think, thirty people at that hearing that evening, or other cases heard, that were sent notification by regular mail.
Right. And how many regarding this project, none, nobody showed up at that hearing.
A couple of comments.
In that whole neighborhood. So if you're trying to make me believe, and the others here, that they all received that letter and went, eh, I don't care about it, but you know what? A month from now, my life was turned upside down, my life was ruined where I live. That's not fathomable, that's not believable. I'm not blaming you, I'm just saying that's the way it is. These people feel terribly wrong, and had they received a letter, at least one out of the thirty people would have shown up at a hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCarron.
I was just going to ask, you said there really quickly that this was the only time that someone stated they missed the letter? Because out of all those eight years, yeah, since 2015, you've sent in regular mail, and we only have complaints about this particular property, do you agree?
Yes.
No other, nobody else?
No other complaints ever received in our office, that they never received notice of a hearing in their neighborhood.
And again, if it was one or two people, like, they got the letter. Every single one of them didn't get the letter, and nobody showed up. It's not believable.
Mr. Evans?
So I guess an oddity question, if I went down to your office right this minute, and you turned on that computer, would I be able to read that letter at this moment? That was supposedly sent out to the people.
It was a public notice, I haven't, I haven't been our case law.
No, I mean, talking about is that letter on the computer system anywhere? On our network? If you were to have to print the letter and send it out to people, could I actually go to your office this second, turn on a computer, read that letter?
It's, the hard copy file is in our, is in our. I don't know if that word document from 2020 is still saved, you know, it may be, I mean, I could guarantee you that the notice that was in the paper and was mailed to those folks by regular mail, the copy of that public notice is in our files.
That's a public notice, I'm talking about the actual form letter that went out to, supposedly went out.
So they received the letter in the mail that included the public notice. That's the content of the letter. We don't send hundreds of personalized letters to each person. We send them each a letter that, an envelope that includes the public notice of the hearing coming and all of the applications listed to be heard that evening, where they're located, who the applicant is, what's being requested, the nature of the business, and so on.
I like Mr. Thornt. It's just highly unbelievable.
Okay, we're going to move on to number, the old number three, now number five, discussion regarding resolution authorizing the additional use of American Rescue Plan Act funds to make repairs of Luzerne County Correctional Facility. And then you can go right into, well, path is the next one, so if you want to.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, good evening. So our first, the first one that we have here is in regards to needing additional funds for the projects that council already approved. Okay. Yes, James Wilber, Division of Correctional Services, Division Head. So what we're looking to do is, as this project was inherited by myself, I'm trying to get it finished, trying to be effective, efficient, so we can have a safe facility. And what has happened is there's a, several different cost factors that have now presented themselves since the original three resolutions were passed. And what we're looking at is, there was a delay cost, I believe it was included in the packet. There was a delay cost for the elevator. There was also a, when they were in the middle of doing the roof project, already in process, found another roof there at the facility. As any of you know, we have an aging facility, we have a lot of problems with the infrastructure over there. Roof number seven wasn't even repairable, so they had to go back and look, and this is, and I can attest to it, because part of roof number seven is over the shift commander's office that I sat for a few years, and as we moved water buckets around, you know, and navigated, the water problem was there. So roof number seven needs to be repaired. It wasn't in the initial bid, it wasn't in the initial project, because they weren't aware of it. And now that they're in the middle of the overall project, now roof number seven needs to be repaired in order to make sure that what we can do is have the whole roof project and not them go do this particular project, cap everything off, and then have to come back and do roof number seven, which is right now, according to CND waterproofing, unrepaired. Yes, sir.
In your request here, it says you're looking for two hundred and five thousand, but you have those two bills, it's how they have to be about ninety.
So, great question, great question, because here, so as you know, I took over as division head March 1st. Now, I got a, I received a memorandum of understanding draft from Booth Consulting in reference to these three projects. The numbers weren't adding up, so I had to go back and look at it in reference to the three resolutions that were previously signed by council. And then there was an email that was sent out, not to me, because I wasn't in this role at the time, on January 11th, stating that the repair projects, the final cost were, for the elevator replacement projects, eight hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars and zero cents. The roof replacement project was one four oh five, so one point four. And then a fire system replacement project was four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five sixty, seventy-seven. So now that number added up to two point six seven seven, zero one five dot seven seven, which was not the amount of money that was already set aside in the ARPA resolutions by council. So that left a shortfall at that particular time of seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-five, seventy-seven. Then what comes across my desk is what I just referenced, and that is the delay to the elevator cost by Otis, the sole bidder, of forty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-two, seventy-five, and then the additional roof repair, which is fifty-five thousand, nine ten. That puts the total at, the draft resolution was one seventy-seven, five eighty-eight, fifty-two, to the penny. But to Mrs. Radell's point, in talking with the county manager, the two oh five, the reason we're asking for that is so we're not back here in thirty days again, because there's something else that we not are sure that, you know, we can't get taken care of, because this roof project must get done. The elevators, the parts are on order, they're projected to start in the next few months. So these are projects that have to get done in the facility.
You know, the only thing I'd like to say is, I remember sitting here, that's how many months ago, and when this roof subject came up, and so big news here, the officer from Bloomberg. And I asked the question, you're not going to come back for any more money. We took a drone, we went over buildings, we can guarantee it, there'll be nothing else, because it was the second time they came back. And here we are in a third time, and I get it, it's whatever, not only fifty-five, fifty buys a lot of money. But it annoys me when people do this day in and day out. And that's, you miss the whole roof.
Yeah, I'm annoyed, to your point, sir, I'm annoyed too, because I, I mean, I wasn't here in the beginning of this project.
Trust me, I'm just out of conversation.
I agree, no, I agree.
But when you tell me that you're the best of the best, and you flew a drone over, and there's not going to be any more expenditure, and then you pop this on us, kind of annoying. And then this whole elevator thing, if I never hear of this another day in my life, because it seems like everything's delayed, and they come back for another hundred grand.
Mr. Scavenger, just so you know, I kid you not, you and I don't agree on much, when this came up on the agenda call, when this came up on the agenda call, I was like, wait a minute, we saw a presentation saying the roof was sealed, it was good. And then same thing, I've been hearing about these elevators, I think since I was in college, like, and I understand they're an issue, but let's just fix it.
I agree, thank you, I agree, that's what we need to do, is get them fixed, and that's the problem.
Do me a favor.
Yes.
Don't come back for twenty-five cents for that elevator or that roof.
I wish these elevators had been fixed a long time ago, and we won't even go there. They were fixed, but, but.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars.
They were, correct, they were, but they're not, they're not, we have one operational elevator, just to begin with, one.
I understand that, but don't say they weren't fixed, they were fixed. We spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to do that.
Yeah, Mr. Wilber. Yes. I don't understand, when we received a bid to repair the elevators, a large number too. And the delays are through no fault of, who's our talent or else. They bid the job, that's a risk to take when you bid. And you're supposed to incorporate some port on. So. I understand, understand. Fifteen, twenty million dollar project. And we anticipate inflation, things like that, labor costing, creasing, the job was going to get dumped for another twelve to eighteen months. What, I know you can't answer for Otis, but when they bid the job, was it Luzerne County's fault? So this is, I attached that on there, and what there were, what they it stated on there was labor and material increase due to the delay in the award. So we delayed it? So I believe, I wasn't, again, I took over March 1st, so there, there seemed to be some confusion about moving this project forward. Okay, so between now and next meeting, someone at the county, Mr. Swetz Baby, needs to send an email out to council confirming there was a delay, and the delay was our fault on account of that.
Okay.
We need that.
Well, yeah, I'm not sure if it was, but we'll get clarity.
Right. The second thing I want to bring in your presentation, and this has nothing to do with you, because you were, you're just recently been put in your position. About a year ago, council was invited to tour the prison, and I went on that tour with some others. And I was in that room under roof seven, where the buckets were everywhere, plastic was hanging and catching water, water was leaking in different spots. I was allowed in prison once, and I knew about it. You said in your presentation, nobody knew about it, it was not in the original bid. No, so, again, I'm not sure, because I wasn't part of that bid. I knew there were problems with the roof, I certainly addressed it with our maintenance department. So nobody put that in the original bid? I don't, I can't speak to that, I don't know. Well, you said earlier, nobody put that in the original bid, and that's why it needs to be done now.
And we, we just need an opportunity to dig into this a little bit further. I think we all take a look at this on our own time, because it's late, but I'm going to tell you, when, the last time they came back, in and out of the prisons, time-consuming, we have to remove some razor wire, we heard it all again in the last increase. And you know what, I'm sorry, but you're bidding a prison, you know, I don't care if it's here or in Muncie, you have things that you have to do to get in and out. You take, like Mr. Thornton said, take that into consideration. And as far as a bid, a bid's a bid, and Otis manufactures elevators too, by the way. So, but I know their ploy, because I know the company, I worked for, we only have a lousy bi-floor elevator, guess what? Probably spent three, four hundred thousand, kept breaking, breaking every month, out of service, don't they do? Sorry, you need a new one, after you already sunk three hundred and fifty grand into that one. So I get it, I understand the game.
Some of us think there's art money out there waving in front of everybody, and everybody's going, oh, we got art money out. Right, and I understand that, but from a practical standpoint, knowing we only have one elevator in this operation at this point. So even to Mr. McGinley's point, yes, they were fixed along the way, and they would go down quite often. And the problem then now is the board, is my understanding, the board in our older elevator now is obsolete, they can't even repair it. And that's, that was the problem we were running into. And so I guess, again, this precedes myself, I don't know if it was, I believe it was, you know, decisions that the previous administration made, but I'm just trying to make sure at this point, now that, now that I bear this responsibility, I'll try to get any answer to any question I can to you, so we can work through, however we need to.
Yeah, because it is a matter of safety, one elevator, leaky roofs, they're hazardous.
Yes.
The other thing is, is that, do we have any, any idea, if there's any type of maintenance agreements that we could get for those elevators, you know, keep the longevity of it going, or maintenance upkeep, because, I mean, you're running a jail, obviously it is a safety issue. Whoever's doing some of the bidding or bid specs on our part here at the county, I mean, needs to like sharpen their pencil a little bit. I mean, we get the blame for a lot, but, you know, the delay, I don't know if we can delay anything, anytime like the prisons come over for a request, you can grant.
I don't know, again, I don't know, I'm not saying it was a delay on your part, remember, that administration, there was a, there was a turnover, there was a little bit of.
The letter is very vague, you know, I mean, I'd like a little bit more detail, our forty-some thousand dollars, have them do a detailed analysis of what this, what these parts are, I mean, that's just a one-liner, it doesn't tell me anything besides.
And again, as far as that goes, I don't know if Mr. Plush could speak more to that, because again, I, this, I'm not sure. Well, we have our, we have our own maintenance department, but at times, but at times the other departments do get it, yes. And it comes to engineering, the engineering department.
Mr. Wilber, I'd like to see Mr. Stobak come back. He's a gentleman who made the presentation.
Yeah, it's your subject.
And particular that roof, because I went through the prison back in 2012, and that roof was leaking at that time. So, you know, it's not like it's, this morning we found out.
It's been going up.
And he's, the roofing expert. The roofing expert, and, you know, he has a good reputation, but we should definitely find out what happened there. And the other thing is, you can't ask for a contingency fund out of ARPA money.
Again, it wasn't necess, I, in talking with county manager.
I'm just telling you, you can't, it's not, it's not allowed in the ARPA. So, you know, go ahead and ask for what you need, but don't ask for a contingency fund out of ARPA money. And I believe the elevators have been in our capital plan for several years now.
The, the new elevator project?
Yeah. I'll go back and look at that, but I, I really think there's been an opportunity there for a couple of years.
Again, I, I, I don't wanna keep belaboring the point about the previous administration, I, I don't, I can't answer what they did or didn't do. I just know now, here we are, and here I am, and I wanna get it fixed, and so that's why I'm coming to you to state, here's what we've got, let's figure it out, and let's get it done.
Yeah, we all agree that there's just some unanswered questions, so we'll work together, council, the manager, we could, even attorney scheme, we could get some answers to the questions before this goes forward, but, uh, we understand your, your words in the right place, we get that, yeah.
Maybe give you a quick suggestion too, you know, you have obviously white shirts over there, your leadership team, and if they notice any repair issues, I mean, bring it to the forefront.
Oh, we did.
Well, I mean, have them come to you, and you come to us.
I understand, I, yes.
All right, can we, we'll just really quick, it was, um, January of twenty twenty-two, that we talked about, that's all my notes, so. Yeah. Thank you, could we jump right into that?
So, again, one of the issues is that, you know, we are faced with the end of the three-year contract with Well Path LLC, uh, on May fifteenth, uh, twenty twenty-three, um, so it's May fourteenth, so, so basically, come May fourteenth, our contract ends, uh, with Well Path, and they were proposing, and sent a proposal, we met with, with their, um, their, uh, regional vice president, things of that nature, talked about where, where things were at. Their proposal was a one-year extension, I, or, contract renewal, excuse me, not an extension, contract renewal with, uh, the addition of the medically assisted treatment program. Now, very quick, again, I know it's late, and I know, I don't wanna, but the medically assisted treatment program is something that's not new here, uh, as far as in Pennsylvania, it's new in Loser County Correctional Facility, but it's not new to facilities. In some states, medically assisted treatment is actually, it's actually legislated, they have to do that now, inside a correctional facility. And, um, what the attempt was to do is to try to mitigate as many risks as we can, because of the amount of, um, you know, opioid substance use disorder that come through our, you know, come through our facility. And, um, and so we tried to take a proactive approach, we met with Well Path, and even without any kind of, um, contract renewal at that point, they agreed February twenty-seventh to help us not only do, uh, a, a medical assisted treatment program, but also, we, uh, started a detoxification unit there as well, so that when, um, and they make, or a new commit comes in as a detainee, they're, um, they're, uh, looked at on, from a medical standpoint, um, and if they meet the criteria of being involved in an active detox, then instead of just, you know, putting them anywhere, we now have dedicated units, um, right next to the medical facility, so what that enables us to do is our medical teams are able to respond quicker, um, because again, and I, not to be, I'm not trying to be, you know, with one elevator, though, it's difficult, sometimes, you know, as well as I do, seconds matter, especially in, in a life-saving situation, we're talking seconds matter. And with those detox units right next to medical, them able to respond very quickly, that, it's been a very good thing, um, and of course, it's developing, moving forward, but Well Path and the leadership there currently, um, really was very, um, very helpful, very proactive, and we worked together as an administration to put that together, and then with the, the medically assisted treatment program, um, as a pilot program, already, average daily population at both facilities, between the main and the MOU, the minimal offender unit, is around five fifty, five sixty. We currently have, right around on average, about fifty to sixty that are on the active medically assisted treatment program. Now, that is not Suboxone, it's Subutex, I don't wanna get too far into the medical weeds, because I'm not a medical professional, but I do know that. So it's a, it's a pure, very, very light dose of buprenorphine, and, um, also Vivitrol, which is an opioid blocker. And that's, uh, depending on what their medical criteria is, these inmates are, um, you know, evaluated, and then the program is very regimented, um, and so it, so far, it's been working well. The issue I, why I bring this up here, obviously, is it's May already, we're already at the end of our time period, and so, um, we wanna make sure there's no interruption in healthcare in the facility. Yes, Mr. Wilber?
Why are we bringing, being given this two weeks before it's expiring?
Because this is what I inherited, unfortunately, this is, this, I, I, I hate to say that, and this is, this is the height of my frustration. Um, this is one of probably five or six things that I have to try to get, so, unfortunately, because it was mismanaged, that's the only way I can answer you. Um, because it should have been there soon, because it is May, it should have been something we, we're having a conversation about, um, a while back.
Thank you.
I have a question, have, uh, and I don't know if you know this, did we put out an RFP, because now we're just looking to, it's, now that one more year.
Right, so to this point, no, not yet, that's, that's, again, this is, this is, kind of was brought right here to the forefront, and we've been talking about it for the last month, to say, what, we need to get something going here, finally was able to sit down.
Sorry, I did, I did ask, we talked about this on our agenda meeting when it came up, um, we didn't put on RFP, if council were to vote it down, then the RFP would go out, we'd look to do a month-to-month contract.
Month-to-month part of the contract firm.
I don't believe it is, we'd have to look to do-
Most contracts have a month-to-month.
Is it, if we don't do something by that May fifteenth, will it go to month-to-month automatically?
I don't, I'm not sure, uh, Mr. Wilber said he was gonna check on that.
Okay.
They are willing to do, they are willing to go month-to-month.
Yeah, okay.
So right now, what we have in front of us is just a proposal, there's not even a, an actual contract, because of the uncertainty of, of what we're, you know, what direction we were headed, so as soon as I can communicate with them, um, I, I think they're willing to do whatever needs to be done, so if it did go to RFP, we just need to make sure there's no discontinuity in, in medical care. And, and, you know, we, I think, I believe it's a sixty-day, um, either way, if, if we're going to, uh, if we were gonna not use Well Path anymore.
Just wanna finish one other thing now, with, um, okay, I was just reading through like CCAT, the county commissioners, in here talks about telehealth, and I don't know, I'm just, I'm just met, or telemedicine, and maybe it's something that you can check into, but it just says, when it may, with mental health concerns, concerns in crisis, a telehealth provider may be the only immediate option available. Um, I don't know, you know, maybe there's a lot more to talk about in there, but it's just something I happened to read.
Right.
You could check into it. Well, with, well, Well Path, um.
Okay, Mr. Thornton?
Yeah, I, I have a very, uh, large point to make here, and it's not directly used for edification of council here. One thing that I, I deal with daily in my job the past thirty years is the CPI, Consumer Price Index, that's the measure of inflation. Well, there's not one inflation number, the Federal Bureau of Labor Statistics publishes more than a half a dozen inflation numbers. They'll publish what's called, uh, inflation all items, that includes everything, food, oil, energy, healthcare, blah, blah, blah. Then they publish another inflation number called all items less food and energy, sometimes food and energy is through the roof. They publish another CPI called, uh, CPI Medical Care, it's for the healthcare field. Okay, this letter from Well Path justifying their increase, I highlighted in yellow, states all over the place, they're using, in other words, they picked the highest CPI number they could find, even though it doesn't relate to their field, and they're using, uh, the Consumer Price Index for all items. That, that's wrong, they, they're using the wrong argument, they're doing it to show us a very high inflation number, so, they're using six percent for February of twenty twenty-three, the actual number for February twenty twenty-three by the Bureau of Labor Statistics from the fellow governor, is one point four nine percent, you can look it up, one and a half percent, okay? Uh, it's nowhere near the six percent, now, I'm all for giving them maybe a little increase, but not based on what they're arguing, six percent, that's wrong. Yes, the inflation number for all items in the country right now is five percent, for all items less food and energy is five point six, for the medical care, it's one point five percent. Since last year, and, and actually, last month, it was minus point three, deflation. It would, medical prices went down a little bit, and, uh, I looked it up on several different sites, just to verify, this should interest everybody here. The last seven months, here's the medical care historical data for the last seven months, starting with September last year, six percent, I would just go month by month, five percent, four point one, three point nine, three point oh, two point three, February, one point four nine, March. The inflation rate for medical field is one and a half currently, it's not six percent, and it was only six percent one month, last September, oh, and before that, it was even lower for a prior year, so, based on this letter, I think it's, uh, ingenuous or instance here, for them to present this to council for their justification of, of adding a lot more money to their contract, now, on top of that, I gotta say, personally, I'm not happy with Well Path's performance. Without getting into details, we all know here, that there's been a lot of issues with them over there. There's a lot of bad things that have happened in that prison to inmates, which partially falls under their responsibility. And I'm tired of going in that back room and hearing executive session meetings on it all the time, I'm only here for sixteen months, and, and I can't tell you how many lawsuits we have. Uh, so, this is disingenuous, the numbers aren't right, I get it, they gave you the letter, this person signed it from Well Path, Mr. Shane, Matt Levine, and the numbers are bull, they're, they're not real, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton, any other questions? Okay, we will move-
I, I just think we should pursue month-to-month right now, until we get all these answers, we don't want a lapse of, uh, healthcare over there. But I don't think we're ready to move forward with a lengthy contract.
Senator, uh, one quick statement, uh, I really believe that we deserve better. I've been here six years, and nothing but problems with Well Path, there has to be an RFP sent out there, there's gonna have to be, we have to get some good responses back, Well Path is not the answer, we have to do better.
And I know, I know you said that they're, they're proactive with the, with the Suboxone, it's not Suboxone, but they're more, I think it's reactive, we've been having issues. It's not proactive, if, if you waited for all-
But not every administration prior to us wanted that to happen, so, I'm just gonna be honest, there, there, because there's a lot of, there's, sometimes what happens is, security is, if you, if you do research on this, I, I, again, I don't wanna belabor this, we all probably want to be somewhere else. Uh, but when you do research on medically assisted treatment, or on opioid, uh, things of that nature, in regards to corrections, in regards to law enforcement, there's a bias, there is a very clear bias that, ba- basically, oh, you're just, you're just, you know, doing whatever you can to, you know, no, you're not gonna help the situation, you know, now we're gonna have this in our facility, um, so, there is a, a security, what you would call a security risk, potentially, could be, there's always a security risk, we have contraband issues, that's what we deal with every day. But I think, for whatever reason, again, I can't speak to previous administrations, they didn't want to do anything like this, only the link section was for, for pregnant females, that's, and that was Suboxone, that was Suboxone, not Subutex, and not the Vivitrol. Then there, then times, you know, begin to change, I remember having a conversation probably a couple of years ago, when, uh, previous director was there, maybe a year and a half ago, where there were starting to be federal guidelines about the MAP program, so, I'm not, whether it's Well Path, that's, that to me is, that's, you guys are the council. I, I just don't wanna see a disruption in medical care, because I don't wanna see any inmates die, I don't wanna see, I don't wanna see any staff put in harm's way, and, and that's, 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 that's my bias, that's my bias, not necessarily, I don't wanna, you know, I'm not here to, to, to be a, uh, recruiter for Well Path. I'm here to say, right now, the Well Path today is not the Well Path that we keep referring to, and the reason why I say that, leadership matters. Everything rises and falls on leadership, there's, there's a good leadership structure in place locally here, can't speak to, I don't, I mean, I met them, but I don't know. Um, however, the other thing is, is their staffing, even though it's not at a hundred percent, because staffing is hard in the medical field, it seems overall, but their staffing is much different than it was in these times, that, these lawsuits now that are, um, I guess, finally coming to conclusion. We now have a full, um, for the most part, a full mental health staff there, nurse practitioner, um, you know, we have mental health professionals, we have, um, psychiatrists, more of that, what you said, Mr. McGur, the, like the telehealth, they do have a, a portion of that inside of their, inside of their program, so, and psychiatrists and things of that nature, so.
Thank you for that insight, Mr. Perry, did you have anything else?
I, I, based on our discussion tonight, I would ask if the social office prepares something, just a month-to-month, until we make a decision. And have that on the agenda for the next meeting.
Sure.
Right up against it.
Was this the RFP, though, that we put out, and you didn't get any other people, or other companies?
Yeah.
So, just, again, there was a time where we had Well Path, we didn't like Well Path, we decided we were gonna go with Wexford. That didn't work out, and we have Well Path again. Wexford was a short, and I don't know all the history, Mr. McGinn, is that, so, I do know it was a short stay.
So we're doing something wrong with other counties that get forty-five. Proposals, and we get one.
You're right, Kevin, we, we, we've gotta get more.
Yeah.
So, I, and I don't know how many companies, I know there's not a, a whole lot of companies that I've, you know, but I'm sure there's companies-
I'll make you a promise, not tonight, though, I'll guarantee tomorrow, I'll help you.
Because I, I've run across a few of them, but I don't know the answer to how many.
All right, thank you so much for your time, all right, guys, we gotta keep, uh, tracking forward, it is, uh, nine forty. No discussion on memorandum to council from the district attorney regarding the Oakway settlement funding, we might be done, because I don't see anybody here to talk about it.
Sounds good.
Okay, moving on, um, it's the, the co-part letter, um, and you just review the letter, Mr. Jones touched on the co-part issue, you have all the documentation, review it before the next meeting, please. It's nine forty, and we still have to do public comment, is it, quickly?
Uh, this was the best I could do to get this to Ms. McDermott in a few days, based on your recommendation. At this stage, I would no longer recommend paragraph six, I would, I would strike the idea of asking them for an earthen berm. I think the fence and the tree plantings would be adequate for the situation, they would be a, two big benefits to this, add value to the situation, the earthen berm is problematic for a number of reasons, I wanted to recommend that you strike paragraph six.
I had it, I had it circled, and I thought, just to maybe take that out, and I don't know if anybody else read it and felt that anything should change, but first of all, thank you, because I was asked to get a letter together, but of course, I didn't know where to start, so I do appreciate you putting it together. But if anybody has any additional reviews, or you feel that this is good, the only thing is maybe, you know, just at the end to say, um, you know, please let us know, um, if you can accommodate any requests, and thank you in advance, like, something like that.
Maybe it was the contact.
Instead of being a good neighbor, I thought maybe.
And, and maybe it was the contact, for them to reach out to, like a name, I don't know who that would be, it's up to you.
All right, thank you both for your work on that, oh, we now have public comment, I'm gonna read the letters first, um, today, just wanna get them out of the way. Um, this first one is from Andrea Guad from Wolf's Bear, I would like to voice my objections to the changes to the charter and the voting procedure, council appears to be considering, uh, one, change in the size of council, I think this would be an affront to the voters of the county, such actual results in a reduction of representation of the citizens, which was one of the reasons the charter expanded the size of council in the first place, two, appointment of the chair of the board of elections, frankly, this appears to be, one, a power grab by the member of council, two, it adds veracity to the big lie, in quotes, whether council members are willing to admit a public player or not, each one cannot help but be aware of the lies concerning the election that have been perpetrated upon the voters, truth is truth, the facts support the truth, and the facts clearly and unguainably indicate that the twenty twenty election is both free and fair, behaving in a manner that suggests there is any doubt concerning those facts, as demeaning to the members of council and constituents, there present, thank you for your attention. thank you for your attention and consideration, Andrea Guad.
Real quick on that, we were not appointing the chair, we were appointing the fifth member, the five members to take the chair, just to clarify.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Wilber. Okay, next one is from Pam Key. Where is she from? It says she/her, Prep Point NEPA from Michaelene's Mission. To all county council members, I am aware of the numerous lawsuits that the county has brought against them by the neglect from Well Path and Luzerne County Garage facility, far more than just the deaths in recent months. The opioid settlement fund should not be given by no means to be used for Suboxone program run by Well Path. Their contract should be voided come May twenty twenty-three, they have cost of tax, there's enough money. Also, I'm frustrated with any type of detox unit inside this prison walls, which I've heard personally was in a day room and seventy-two hour, which is not enough time or proper treatment for listed drugs applied on the streets of Luzerne County. As per medical examiner tox screens and my personal experience working harm reduction in HIV and HBC on the streets, it would take at least seven to ten days to properly detox one from xylene fentanyl ketamine. There's just medically too much to go wrong, seizures to death. I think Well Path, where there is no medical doctor in there, if the county wants to continue to lock people up and charge them for drug paraphernalia, then they should use the Luddy funds for this. Also send them bed-to-bed treatment immediately following incarceration with proper detox protocol. I would also like to be on the opioid board as well, where my experience speaks for itself. All this opioid funding needs to be allocated properly in our county. We lost a hundred and seventy last year, over two hundred in twenty twenty-two. Enough is enough already, people are dying on the streets, there's much stigma. But the police department, EMS, etc., we need our prevention and heat children in schools, not the dare program. The real truth of drug supplies, real data, real from a real mother who lost her child from overdose, who shows other people harm reduction is love and saves lives every single day. SUD, mental health shouldn't be frowned upon, but helps. Members of public here, let's just see.
I guess. Elizabeth Hart, Landhand of the Township. I'm waiting for the announcement of the top three candidates. It was said in the paper they were going to be announced tonight, and they're not announced. Did we give them to the media and not to the people in the room? This is my question.
Do you want, council, do you want to announce the top three at the meeting? It was, I was told that they'd be given out after the meeting, not at the meeting.
So we sat here all night long to listen to the council members, and we're not going to hear them.
The way that it was said was that these were going to be given to us after the meeting. So we did get them earlier, then anticipated.
So we'll see them in the paper tomorrow, is that what you're saying?
You're going to announce it, right?
You're supposed to announce them.
That was not the plan.
Oh, whatever.
But I could, I could announce them. Are you guys okay with me announcing them? Not on your head, we can't actually vote? All right, let's wait till we're done with public comment, let's just finish this up, let's just wrap it up.
The suspense for real.
Sorry, sorry. So my other thing is about Suboxone and Suboxone, because my brother's in palliative care. And he was just put on SubuTex. And SubuTex basically lets the other medications in your body still work, where Suboxone does not. So really, Suboxone would be a better program than the SubuTex, because if they get their hands on illegal drugs in the jail, what they're taking now doesn't block that, where the other one does. So my brother's on the SubuTex, which is what they're giving him now, because he's on a gabapentin. And if he was on, if he was on Suboxone, that would block the other drugs and his medicine wouldn't work. So.
Thank you, Ms. Hartman, any other members of public? Mr. Griffith, did you want to speak?
On your budget report tonight, I know we kind of ran out of time, so we didn't get a chance to go over the budget report, but please pay attention to the merit raise line item. That should be a budget transfer into salaries, so council knows that that was allocated and put in the salary line item. Year after year, there's been merit raises and council's never seen the transfer happen. It's always been given the raises, but it's never happened in the budget, on the budget report. The controller did that, because I want the council to know when there's a merit raise that we transferred the money from the merit raise line item into salaries. So you know that the transfer was made and how much that merit raise was. Council has a right to know that and should be in your reports. The other item that I have to talk about is on, to Mr. McGinley's point, and everybody's about the elevators, the twenty-one, twenty-three capital projects planned funded by the one ninety-four bond fund. They allocated three hundred and fifty thousand for elevator modernization in that plan. Prior to that, there was an elevator number two repair, we paid seventy thousand for. Luzerne County Correctional Facility control panel replacement for the elevators, that was a hundred thousand. So there's been numerous elevator money spent by this council in capital plans for the elevators in elevator one and two. So I don't know what's happening there. The other issue that I had and I sent to council was the election purchases for pens and screen. There was a, an issue about elections being cheaper this year because we're using paper ballots. That's truly not going to be the case. These elections are going to cost us more if we use the ballot marking device. Not only is it going to cost us more, but we have a two hundred thousand dollar contract that we have to pay Dominion for their machines this year, because their contract expired in February of this year. So not only are we not going to use the machines, but now we're going to pay two hundred thousand dollars to maintain machines we don't use. This is really silly. If we're going to spend that kind of money for maintenance, we should be using the machines. In contrast to that, in twenty nineteen, nineteen, when we signed the contract for those machines, we bought a five-year warranty on those machines. Council approved that money, three, three and a half million. And included in that money was a warranty on those machines for five years, which takes us to twenty twenty-five. So now we're going to have machines that sit in the warehouse that we don't use, that we have under warranty. So that's much like everybody in this room buying a brand-new car, putting it in the garage and leaving it there for five years until you decide you're going to drive it. And the warranty is going to be expired, but you don't care, because you're not going to drive that, you're going to drive the cheaper car. Nobody does that, and we shouldn't be doing it with the election machines. We paid for the warranty, we have the integrity grant, we should be using them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith.
You're welcome.
Hey, guys, you're staying up so late, I apologize. The drug issue, y'all know that I'm an ex-addict, everybody knows it, ex-drug dealer and ex-convict. I'm also turned my life around. Everybody knows and I put that out, so this way no one could use it against me. Thank you. But we have a big problem in this county. And, and I keep on pleading up here, we got to get more DAs. Because I'm also a bail bond, and I'm a born-again Christian. So I believe that people have deserved second, third, seven times seventy, what Jesus said. But we need to address the biggest problem we have is gangs and drugs and shootings and killings. And it all comes from out of state, out of town. I agree with, there was a person that said on the note, the letter that you read Kendra, about going from bed-to-bed, that's a great policy. We can do intelligent bail reform, not get rid of bail, I'm not saying that. Because bail is make sure people show up for court. But there are things that judges and magistrates and DAs and the, the, the state police and everything, when you arrest a person, if they are an addict, they can get a bed-to-bed. We got to get the out-of-state drug dealers in jail. The people that, now, not the drug, the local drug dealer, the person that sells to get high. That's not a drug dealer, that's a drug user that's selling drugs to get high. And they're incarcerated in the prison. What we need to do is figure out how to get them out of the prison, because they have to deal with some serious people, gangs and stuff like that. So we need to get treatment for the people that need it, especially local people. And the people that come in here and try to share the seat cheap and come in here to sell drugs to our kids, we need to send them away, not plea bargain, send them up the river for life. And I was probably one of those that probably should have got life. Because honestly, I hurt a lot of people, and I can never, ever change that. But I could be up here fighting for the next generation, and I'm doing that. So please, let's, I keep on going, we need a DA, we need to support the DA, we need to support the prison, and we have to support care for our kids. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Any other members here? All right, Mr. Raabo.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll be really quick. Two things, one is on the prison. I would like to add the water problems with the check valves that have been, that were repaired and then had to be re-repaired because of malfunctions with the water system at the prison. I would remind everyone of that, too. And my question since, since the beginning with regards to the prison roof, where's the county engineer? I mean, isn't he supposed to be doing assessments on the roof? Even if there's a current, current roof repair, shouldn't he be doing assessments on the, the other sections of the, of the roof at the prison? I mean, wouldn't that be just good, you know, good maintenance? You know, like to try to, you know, overlook to see if there's any problems. So those two things and plus Mr. McGinley's point, twenty twenty-one resolution one thirty-one, it was in the capital budget for the repairs. As well as twenty twenty-two dash one thirty-one from the ARPA money to fix the, to make the repairs. So those are the two resolutions that council approved of for the prison repairs. And as far as the election machine controller Griffith brought up, I just want to point, remind council, that was borrowed money. That was three point two million dollars of borrowed money the county had to take out a loan for to make those, that purchase of the Dominion machines, along with the electronic poll books. That's all I have, Madam Chair, and plus, thank you and congratulations on your wedding.
Thank you, Mr. Raabo. Okay, guys, we're going to adjourn the meeting and then I'll announce them.
Motion adjourn.
Sir.
All favor.
Hi.
Extensions, opposed, the meeting's adjourned. Candidate ranked in order number one, Ramil de Trocomo. Number two, Fred Rosenkrantz. Number three, William McIntosh.